Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Orange City Council meeting today, Wednesday, December 18th. We will rise for our invitation led by Lieutenant Ross Harrison, followed by our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our own Mayor Cortlande Wade. Please rise.
Father God, it is in the Son Jesus Christ my hand that we come before you, Lord God. Becoming your holy place, Lord God, we ask for your leadership and your guidance, Lord God, in this meeting. We ask that you continue to empower the mayor and the commissioners to do the job that you have put before them for the governor of the people, Lord God. Father God, we give you the thanks of our hand of faith. It is in your Son, Jesus Christ, that we pray. Amen?
Amen.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, everybody. I thank everybody for coming out this evening. Permission for the start of the additional allegiance to our agenda.
Yes, so does the mayor. I have an item, either item on one day, and updates for City Engineer, Corporal Horst-Wirth of Anderson, to give an update on the L Street project.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to add on the item one, item one eight, about update on the L Street project about City Engineer. In further discussion, here in the all in favor of this vision right hand. Motion carries, okay, that would be item one eight. Any other additions, sir?
Also, addition of the, um, under alcohol and beverage license, considered approval of city's alcohol or beverage licenses and renewals.
Motion second for item eight under eight, alcohol beverage license. Motion second, in further discussion. All in favor of this vision right hand? Motion carries too, so that's item eight. Alright. No further additional allegiance to our agenda, we will proceed. Item next is a public comment here. And we have Ms. Diana Taylor. Come forward. Be here. Nope, so we try to come back to you. Mr. Ernest Goldberg. Goldberg not here. Okay, so Madam clerk, anyone else who has signed up for shot down?
Yes, ma'am, probably. Al Bernhardt.
Bernhardt, please step forward and give me your name and your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Okay, my name is Al Bernhardt, 924 Union Street. And, please forgive me, I'm gonna read prepared comments by standpoint and stand time. So if it seems a little personal, just please forgive that. But I'll make sure I cover it in here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. I'm here before you to discuss item thirteen on your agenda. The two memorandums of understanding between the City of Brunswick and BQK Baseball LLC. BQK Baseball is interested in starting a team to participate in the Coastal Plain League. This league is a collegiate summer baseball program of teams in Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia. The CPL league, CPL plays baseball from late May until early August. In the first MOU, BQK Baseball wants the City of Brunswick to build them a $13 million stadium at the city's cost. In return, BQK Baseball wants to lease the stadium from the city for fifteen to twenty, fifteen to thirty years, and to relocate its headquarters and home base to the stadium. BQK Baseball can control and manage the stadium and will let, let the city use the stadium that we pay for for up to six events per year. In addition, BQK Baseball gets the keep all revenue collected during baseball games. In the end, BQK Baseball has year-round control of the stadium built by the city, even though their team plays in it about three months a year. Let's start with the $13 million needed to build the stadium. After all the hand wringing, indecision, and national fatigue that's gone on for the last year over having to borrow money to complete funding of a SPOSS-approved conference center, where exactly would the City Commission get $13 million for some non-city resident's direct benefit? The, the most likely answer is from city property owners in the form of increased property taxes. Borrowing $13 million at four percent interest for twenty years equates to a yearly debt payment of $945,329. The City of Brunswick does not currently have incoming yearly revenue to cover pay for this additional $925,329 of debt every year for the next twenty years. So that means one way to cover this is to increase property taxes. There are approximately 7,600 taxable properties in the city limits. Doing simple math, to cover the $945,329 yearly debt the stadium will bring to the city, property owners will see an average increase of, in their property taxes of $124.38 per year for the next twenty years. Of course, this amount will be more for some and less for others, as this was just simple math of dividing the debt across 7,600 properties, just to make the illustration. But this illustrates that the property owners who already have the highest property tax rate in the county and just got hit with a yearly stormwater utility fee will definitely see a tax bill increase for two decades. City property owners are going to be required to shoulder the financial burden of someone else's stadium so that some non-city entity can directly benefit. I challenge Nick and Danielle Seager House, the owners of BQK Baseball, to sell their home on Zinsa, Zinsa, and move into the city full-time so that they can be personally invested in the stadium's costs through paying their share of city property taxes for the next twenty years. Putting further financial strain on city property owners in the poor city of Georgia is now the answer. Another method for the city to fund and build BQK Baseball Stadium is to put it on the SPOSS 2020 list. If the SPOSS referendum passes next May, the city is slated to receive $15.8 million of $105 million the county expects to collect over the five-year period. In my opinion, spending most of the city's SPOSS revenue on a baseball stadium to benefit a non-city entity instead of fixing city roads, sidewalks, improving lighting, and upgrading fire and place equipment for the benefit of city residents is an absolute non-starter and will ensure to defeat the SPOSS 2020. If BQK Baseball LLC set a team and a stadium with such a good idea, then I believe they have the following options that will not put the burden squarely on the backs of city property owners. Option one, build their own stadium in the city. Again, if this is such a great idea, BQK should borrow or raise the funds to buy the land at market value from the city and build their own stadium. They would then have to pay city property taxes on the land and structure, and would also have to collect a city sales tax on each game to get sold. BQK Baseball would then be 100% responsible for the debt incurred for construction, maintenance, and renovations. It's easy to say that you need a brand-new $13 million baseball stadium with all the bells and whistles when you get someone else to pay for it. I'm willing to bet that BQK Baseball LLC would scale the stadium down to much, to much less than $13 million if they have to pay for it out of their own pocket. Option two, renovate Ed O'Miller Stadium. BQK Baseball could work with Glen County School System on a deal that would require the school system or BQK Baseball to pay for the renovations necessary to bring this existing historic stadium up to Coastal Plain League specifications. Although owned by the school system, the stadium is in the city limits and would achieve BQK Baseball's stated goal of bringing visitors into the city without creating a twenty-year financial burden on Brunswick City property tax owners. Option three, use Glen Academy or Brunswick High School baseball stadiums. This option could be scored between Glen County School System and BQK Baseball. The feasibility of this would depend on whether the pitching mound is high enough and the outfield is deep enough at either school's baseball fields.
Mr. Bernhardt, sir.
Sir.
Time, can you wrap it up?
Alright, and fourth option was to build their own stadium in the county. So I'll get ready, I'll get ready to the point. I'm not against the idea of collegiate summer league baseball team or any baseball team in Brunswick. I have 100% against the city property tax owners shouldering the financial burden of a stadium that a non-city entity controls directly benefits from. I ask the City Commission to feed both of these MOUs into the shredder, mail the shreddings back to BQK Baseball LLC at 260 Edwards Plaza, Unit 20537, St. Simon's Island, Georgia 31522, and send a message to them that their baseball stadium will not be built on the vast city of Brunswick property owners. Let them know that the City of Brunswick will entertain a baseball stadium and a team in the city limits when BQK Baseball comes back with a serious proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernhardt. Time's up a little bit.
Robbie Turner.
Mr. Turner, please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
My name is Robbie Turner. I live in 108 Julunton Drive in Brunswick, Georgia. I want to thank y'all for letting me come and talk to you, and thank you for your service to Brunswick. First, I want you to know I grew up here, I'm a resident, I care about Brunswick, I've been sitting in the near. My mother taught at the old C.B. Square School, lived here all my life. I've got three kids and three grandkids, I care about Brunswick. I have a business here. Been in the insurance business for thirty-four years. And sixteen years ago, I got to buy the business. We have eighteen employees in the city. And our office is down by Mary Ross Waterfront Park. I'm concerned, first of all, I'm excited about a lot of things going on in Brunswick. We have investors who are buying buildings. We have restaurants that are starting up. There's a lot of good things going on in Brunswick, and I thank y'all for what you've done. Especially, I thank Julie, every time I see the city parks and how nice they've turned out. But I am coming here because I'm very concerned this conference center is a mistake. And there's a number of reasons why. Number one, I think it's going to cost a lot more in operations, and a lot more in debt, and the performance are not accurate and aren't really solid performance. So number one. Number two, I don't think there's demand for it. There used to be conference centers probably twenty, thirty years ago for a standalone conference center. And I understand we're talking about what's connected to a hotel or motel. We don't need to be doing that, in my opinion. We need to entice private industry to build a conference center, or we need to entice a hotel or motel to come downtown. We want people downtown. But if we design a conference center for them, it's gonna be a white hole. We're, the designs I've looked at have many flaws in them. I'm not sure, I'm just gonna, I'm sure y'all have seen some of these, but the number of parking spots between hotel and accommodation itself, if we're gonna have 300 or 400 people, the numbers don't work. The kitchen or warming room is not much bigger than a little warming room back there, 400 square feet. And you're gonna have hangers come in and operate out of that for 350 people. The hotel and the conference center are not connected in the design I saw. That's extremely expensive to operate like that. A rest, a hotel wants to be able to have them connected, to use the common facilities, not to have to, just have a caterer try to go from one place to another. Who's gonna come to the facility? The, the projections were purely the library. That facility is nice. They charge about $300. Now, we're not gonna get, the conferences come to the City of Brunswick library, but they're gonna be our competition for most of the 169 events that were projected in here. We also have many other places. We've been funding the Ritz Theater downtown, or City Home's business facility here that doesn't get used very often. The Coastal Heritage Center, Sea Island, Jackal Island, the college. We kind of work with some of these facilities we already have. I'm gonna try to speed up, this point else I'm kicking out in just a minute. But the gross revenues in the projections show 30% from food. We can't get 30% tack on to the food just from hangers that's coming to do it. That's not realistic to me. I didn't see any, I'm in the insurance business. The performance shows nothing for insurance, and flood insurance, and dental liability insurance. If you've got an $8 million facility or a $7 million facility, you're gonna spend $30,000, $40,000 a year on insurance. It wasn't in there. I didn't see a landscape, um, facility or maintenance. There's gonna be minimal use, and it's gonna be closed most of the time. We need people down, oh, I didn't see any debt service, I didn't see builders' risks. But, so those are some of my concerns with the facility, the layout, and the cost. But we need to use our funds to advise businesses somehow. By the way, I love the design, the look, it was great. But the practicality and the use of it is what I'm concerned about. So if we could somehow take some of our funds and land, and put it out for a hotel or motel, get some quality folks that would come in, and we're gonna entice them with some tax dollars and some land to build something, and put out the specs, and let them do their own conference center and run it. That's what we need to do. Four, have something that residences, an oval fork building, it was an apartment complex. We need more folks downtown. Please, quit spending money on conference center. It's, it's atrocious how much we've already spent in designs and engineering, and I know a lot of that is the past, but you might know how much we spent with Meyer, Russell, Architect, or Meyer.
Your time is up.
Do y'all know how much we spent then so far?
Yes, we do. So your time is up, so please wrap it up.
Does that mean you don't want me to tell you how much you spent?
Well, I already know, but you can tell us, we'll wrap it up, sir.
$370,000?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, for your comments. We appreciate that. Madam clerk, please stand. Turner, also, I'm sorry.
That's alright. That's fine.
Give me, bro.
That's okay.
Uh, Madam clerk?
Sandy Dean.
The dean, please step forward, take your name, your address, and you have five minutes, man.
Allen D. Three. Sandy Dean, 1604 New Castle Street. I'm trying to frame this into a rational statement about an irrational project. Your job as a commissioner is to act in fiduciary capacity. How can you rationalize $13 million being spent on a baseball field? Who came up with this idea? And how long ago? Why would we build a $13 million project with no commitments? Why would we give so many exclusive rights? Why would we not look into other organizations? And what they might be willing to offer us? What process was used to put these people at the top of the list? Where's the money coming from? When you have it on your SPOSS list, it's for $16 million. The county figures show the city might be getting $15 million. With all the other infrastructure that city needs, is this a wise ways to use our SPOSS values? And as if the conference center isn't already expensive and a sore subject. This MOU includes, on page two, and I quote, "As funds allowed, the city may increase the scope of the improvements by electing to expect, expect additional funds on any or all of the following: refurbish any existing trail, refurbish any existing remaining site facilities, and my favorite, approving a designed portion of the stadium to be used as a conference center meeting location." Is this an additional conference center meeting room? Does the city need three conference centers, meeting locations? Do we even need two? I can go on and on. I guess your job is to try and convince your constituents why you think it's a good idea, and why you only put $13 million of our tax dollars at risk.
Thank you, Ms. Dean, thank you for your comments. Madam clerk, you have minutes.
Amy Bernstein.
Andy Bernstein. Please state your name and your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Okay, I'm Eddie Bernstein, I live at 92, 914, which is the street, sorry about that. Actually, I had this issue pretty hard, but I just wanted to bring up that in the newspaper, the downtown supplement is frontier, that is what the West One Town businesses are doing. So if you pick up a supplement to, please go ahead and do that contest. But I did want to mention something that Mr. Bernhardt has spoken. You're talking about a conference center and a stadium. Now, in Nashville, they bought in the Titans, and then they bought in the Predators, and the teams will generate money for the city in terms of sales because people will come to see those teams, and will pay, and go shopping, and whatever. Not that I'm saying I suggest that we build a stadium, I'm just saying it will bring in income. The conference center will not. It is not going to have that same draw, those people are not gonna be shopping downtown. And no matter what we're doing, we're spending a lot of money, I think a little too soon. We have not built ourselves up enough to generate the kind of business that would support a conference center.
Thank you, Ms. Bernstein, thank you for your comments. Madam clerk?
Joshua Butler.
Butler, please, step forward, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Joshua Butler, 23816 Street, Brunswick, New York. Item thirteen, talking about the BQK, BQK Baseball. I think personally, being a child that was born and raised there, seeing the city actually change and transition from coming here or back and forth from college, I kind of think that this would be a great implementation to the city. Kids, you see something that attracts the outside of university. The important things that I know that take kids' imagination on athletic turn, athletic skill, to know that they can make a size of football and basketball. In this area, the baseball is built to not heavily promote it. Baseball can, the avenue for growth, we do have some famous avenues that you can't come through here. But now it's time about transition, let's put things back in order. The actual baseball stadium will be, I feel, will help out the conference center because, you know, you got games coming in, there's high-end games, big-time players coming, coming to see, college kids come play, you got people actually getting into the whole term room, using those facilities to bring more groups out to have more social gathering. So it's just all about the salesmanship of those two entities itself. I know the summer halls are a great couple, or a great family, or to the church room, and then they're very business-wise, but you have to see what's going on. This city of Brunswick, Georgia, through the past ten years, as I came upon, this city has gone, this already will help the club and bring more traction to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, thank you for your comments. Madam clerk?
Mark Edis.
Edis, please step forward, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. Mark Edis, 1095, Warrick Township, Derry. My wife Sarah and my son Ben, I moved to Derry in front Savannah back in April of 2015, I'm sorry, back in April of this year. Been in Georgia since 2015. Moved to Brunswick, I moved to Derry for my new job in Brunswick, that started back in April. From the time I started my job to the time I stand before you now, everyone here now, I came to follow up with the city that I come to every day to work. I have a great job, I get the program for radio stations in town. I am out amongst the people, I see the family oriented, you know, things that happen here in the city. And that said, I believe there used to be more things, and here's where the ballpark comes into place. I also, from 2016, was the, or envy Savannah and its public address announcer. So I've seen firsthand what that ballpark and environment can to bring to everybody who went to the games, not just baseball, it's an experience, it's a way for kids to forget about, or for adults to forget about their problems, and bring their kids in just a great environment, it's not just baseball. I see firsthand, you know, when, when people are leaving the ballpark every night after having a show presented to them, which is exactly what, you know, BQK Baseball would like to present as well. Again, it's more than baseball, it's about bringing the morale of the city up, which I believe Brunswick could use. I believe it could use more family-friendly things to do. I keep coming back to this, but it's not just baseball, it's about bringing families together. In regards to the, the attendance in Savannah, I know everybody's heard about it. Savannah has sold out every single day since about the third day of their existence. Why? Because people travel here. The Macon Bacon came to the league last year, and that was the closest arrival to Savannah. Thousands and thousands of people from Macon made the trip up to Savannah. That can happen here as well. You know, we're an hour away, Savannah will travel. But most importantly, the people in Brunswick need more things to do with their families, and this will be something that they can come and take a trip to and enjoy a night of entertainment, not just baseball. I believe this is a great, great thing for morale of the city, and I believe it needs to come through, it needs to come true. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your comments. Madam clerk?
Jeff Kilmore.
Kilmore, please step forward, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Jeff Kilmore, 322 Mike's Drive Drive, because I'm really nervous, I don't do this very often. One of the things about being last, just, we need to follow up, really good speakers before me, and Albert and Robbie Turner have been very eloquent, and they've been very specific in their objections to a couple of things that are pending before this commission, which would result in borrowing of money and obligating the taxpayers or property owners of the City of Brunswick. I'm opposed to the conference center, that's already been, I already spoke against that. But I'm here tonight to talk about this BQK thing. Savannah's not even close to Brunswick, to Brunswick in terms of the population and the number of people. It would be necessary to make this venture profitable as something that could even be operated on a break-even basis. It's also not a minor league baseball team. We're talking about essentially an intramural collegiate league with questionable quality. I applaud the efforts of doing the things positive in the city, and like Mr. Turner, I'm, I'm really excited to see how they're able to come in and make the best books in the city. This, however, is ill-conceived, it's poorly planned. The citizens haven't had a chance to even see and understand what this document says. And it's only agenda tonight for you to vote on to execute, to vote, execute the memorandum of understanding. Now, I understand that it's not gonna oblige the City of Brunswick anything, it's just to come on and negotiate. But let me read a little bit from what some of the other folks have alluded to. "The city as landlord and subject to the four-year amounts set forth above will be responsible for capital repairs, improvements, including required property insurance coverages that the stadium cite, capital repairs, replacements, improvements, and any renovations or improvements required to ensure that the stadium continues to meet the rules, regulations, standards of CPI." Now, it should be L or I, I can't read. The MOU obligates the city to have to negotiate with the people that are running this stadium. And, and it has to be a joint agreement as to the capital repairs necessary. It's ludicrous. Anyway, the, the efforts are applauded, but this should not be considered. I understand that Edward Moore, not Edward, Ira Copeland Park has been begging about his obligation for this, I don't know if the city attorney has looked, to see if there's a reverter on that property, and if it can even be used for anything other than recreation for the residents of the City of Brunswick. I doubt, I suspect there's a reverter on that property, and it can be developed as a baseball stadium. I doubt, I suspect there's a reverter on that property, and it, it can be developed as a baseball stadium. In any event, uh, I'll buy the sweater, uh, for Mr. Burheim, we'll operate it, uh, and if you miss that, another one wants to come in, they'll take care of it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kilgore, for your comments. Uh, we seem to be, we have, I think, four minutes left, anyone who wants to speak, um, for further comment?
Please take the question.
If anyone wants to speak, please step forward and state your name, and then you have nine seconds. Okay. Well, thank everybody for, for your comments, and I thought the comment here, uh, all the comments were well, uh, well received, and, uh, let you know that it did not fall on deaf ears. Commissions that we move forward with our, uh, credit agenda, uh, before, before, there are any comments you guys would like to make, and it's not with this machine, uh. All right. All right, item number two, item to consider for approval, consider approval of December fourth, two thousand nineteen work session in Redwood Stadium meeting. Oh, sorry. Oh, please. You got me a little flustered here. Let me back up. Item number one, presentation from Tara Bradshaw, Department of Community Affairs, Economic Development, especially regarding mainstream drum. I didn't mean to mess with you.
I'd like to talk to you this evening about some very big developments in the city this weekend. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, like you said, my name is Tara Bradshaw. I work with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Office of Downtown Development. Uh, first, I'd like to thank each one of you for your service to this, uh, city, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you. Through the Office of Downtown Development of the state, we manage the Georgia Main Street Program. And we have the pleasure of working, uh, with over a hundred cities, a hundred and eighteen to be exact, across the state, that are dedicated to the growth of their historical commercial districts. As you're aware, the Main Street program provides a balanced path towards improvisation with a focus on economic development, all in the context of historical situation. In partnership with the National Main Street Center, participating cities are required to meet ten standards during an annual assessment process each year, in order to become an accredited Main Street developer city. During this assessment process, we work together as a team to identify the cities that have gone above and beyond, and consistently excelled in each one of the ten standards that we could afford them. These cities are known as our Georgia Exceptional Main Street Cities. It is because of Brunswick D V A Main Street Program's commitment to excellence and stable leadership that I'm here this evening to congratulate you all on being designated a twenty-twenty James community. Over the past three years, downtown Brunswick has seen thirty-six million dollars in private and public investment in downtown, with a hundred and one new businesses, and netting two hundred and seventy-six jobs right here in your downtown district. Additionally, your Main Street program has attracted three hundred and sixty thousand people to downtown for civic events. So you're all to be committed for your dedication to rebuilding the heart of your city. And in order to recognize the city of Brunswick, and as a token of our appreciation in the Office of Downtown Development, I would like to present to you tonight. Uh, Jennifer Fordham, also D C A, pass that over, she is just kidding, call her out. I would like to recognize Jennifer, she is our Region Twelve, uh, D C A representative, she does a lot of great work for Brunswick. Uh, are you passing out the check tonight? So I'd like to present to you this gateway sign, recognizing your designation this year. It reads, "Welcome to downtown Brunswick, a Georgia exceptional Main Street city."
Thank you.
I've spent a little bit of time personally here in your city, um, three times, just in the last six months, and I can tell you that it's a wonderful, wonderful place to be. I enjoyed my time here, and, uh, I'd like to thank you all personally, for all that you do, and I cannot wait to see what future goals for downtown Brunswick. So thank you all for allowing me to come. If I might, um, I would love to present the sign to you, Mayor, and maybe ask the commission to come down and take a bite of it.
Madam Clerk, the whole commissioner now, want to come out?
Yes, please.
You know, lately Brunswick's been doing a lot of good things, a lot of, a lot of everything in the city of Brunswick. Uh, you can see that things are changing, and, uh, this designation is really, really, uh, well deserved. I would like to thank our Downtown Development Authority, especially Mr. Matthew Hill, his direction. We thank you all for making, making this community, making this the city, one of the beautiful city areas. And, uh, that designation by being a poor city, that's just a designation someone wants to put on there. We're not worried about that, we're gonna move nothing but going upward, upward, and upward. So thank you, thank you so very much for that, for that designation, that presentation too. Thank you very much. You're welcome. All right. Too fast here. Um, our next item is item number one A. Is, uh, our city engineer, Department Works Director, Mr. Garrett Armstrong, to give an update regarding the L Street fight.
There's a, there's a big schedule that we just received from our contractor this week. As you know, we lost, we lost some time, approximately four months of the project, to the land and gas land, gas land installation. We had no plan to land a gas line of the project. They waited until after we began the project, to say, I don't want to come in and replace their entire gas line throughout the project, it took us approximately four months. That has affected this revised schedule, um, the schedule indicates completion of phase one, um, mid-March of twenty twenty. And then that happened course of time, we, we initially indicated, certainly, thought we'd be finishing phase one about this time. So then that happened course of time, those four months that we lost there. Yeah, the four months of that puts us fifth completion of the project, late July, probably all of this, twenty twenty. That's what, this schedule indicates completion of phase one of, like I have a record, when it's asked off, maybe in March twenty-first, twenty twenty. Project ended four months that we lost for, uh, the gas line installation, that there's completion of the project around August, first of August, twenty twenty.
Is this gonna cause any additional cost, I mean, like part cost to the city, if that's up to delays?
Not, not due to the delay.
Well, it costs, it costs the citizens, uh, their inconvenience, when we said we would have done by April first, uh, and we stipulated that for longest people first. Now, now the gas line, they're the corporate owners, then, then they should bear that cost of, of inconvenience that our citizens have incurred, because of their, I, I call them that, just, basically, because I, because I was, I was assured that we talked to them before we did this.
They had the project plans about ten months before we started.
They came down and told us that they didn't know anything about it.
That's, we can show you the emails where they were sending their product.
Well, I, I would love to see them, so we can actually get to the bottom of it. Even though it would make a difference other day, and, uh, we'll put the blame, or, 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 put the blame on people that doesn't do anything for, for the delay.
Right, that's what we had at this point.
And, 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 you see, it always seemed to be on the back end, stuff like that.
I got a question from our city attorney. Isn't there a clause in our contract that says if the job is not completed by said date, then there is penalties?
Yeah, there's a liquidated damages clause, however, that liquidated damages clause will be enforceable against the contractor on the scene, if the delays are the contractor's fault. If delays are not the fault of the contractor on the scene, then they are legally for this liquidated damages.
So then we can't go after the land gas, right?
Oh, no, 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 that's not.
Is it contract?
Okay, I, I understand the contract, I'm, I'm talking about land gas, like, calls these delays. Correct.
So it's, it's not, that's interesting to, to pursue the legal means against an land gas?
Correct.
Well, we need to do that, especially don't get, this thing won't get done by April first, as we, we stated.
I was talking with the city engineer tonight, discussing that, uh, the legal have an idea of final costs related to land gas lines, issue of the job, and then, and then start to pursue action against them.
Well, let's do that posthaste, because it seems like we always stung for, for the back end of the statement. And they always do this, something always happens to us, and we just kind of sit and say, oh, well, that's just the way it is. Well, that's just not, that's not the way you do business. If somebody did this, uh, could not, doesn't get done at a particular time, then somebody would be fired, that's just, 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 just the way it is. I mean, he said in between, it wasn't your fault, however, you were in charge of the project.
So what other measures can be taken, um, to expedite this timeline? You know, you, you, you know that you add another program. So what, you work weekends, you work holidays, you work extended hours? Sounds like something needs to be incorporated. And, and, and for whatever the cost is gonna be for any extended hours, any holiday, A, whatever, then we need to judicially pursue that land gas and life, whatever the cost would be to expedite this process. I mean, it sounds to me, it's simple, add your hours, increase your hours, expedite your timeline, pursue judicially land gas and life, whatever the cost would be incorporated for the city of Brunswick, we pursue them judicially, they're liable for the cost, and any penalties we tack onto it for them putting us in position that would be, let's move on, get down. Uh, what do you mean? Now, what other measure, law strategy, or?
If we could, if we're going to pursue the lack, I have to refer to the old news, we discussed this matter.
All right, okay, okay, I will, we'll do this, definitely.
Any more we can put in there?
Something, we'll leave it up there.
All right, commissioners, um, move right along. Item number two, consider approval of December fourth, two thousand nineteen work session in Redwood Stadium meeting minutes, take step to the rules, item number two, please.
Item number five, the condition is permanent, number nineteen, number fourteen. Normally, it's never just stated who the, the agent is, there's a business name, or business owner. This is that killer's doesn't own the property, and doesn't know the business, so.
I just saw about what they have in the report, that's all the information I have, they have in the report, but they isn't. Sorry about what, um, the.
The city, or city. That happens, I don't know, it's actually a change.
Okay. There's also another, uh, public hearing, man, you cite one of them for two, on page two. You've got Michael Horace was here, it was, uh, the representative, the former office director, his name is Michael Johnson.
Item two, page two.
What, what is the procedure, do you normally, do you put who's presenting, or like, who's there, or do you?
He tried to, he tried to. Whatever he has in the, um, package he did, if he said the A B, that's what we have.
He did the, the assistant, one way or the other, because if he, if we're just, you got the minute meetings, and you got it.
Another, uh, correction of deletions to, uh, correction of deletion to our, our, uh, minutes. Just not, uh, uh, entertain emotion with the corrections that's been. Second, motion second for approval of a management with the, uh, corrections as presented by counsel. Are there any further questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Emotion carries, you have, and thank you. Okay, item number three, consider approval of five hundred and forty, as of October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, Ms. Catherine Hill, uh, five hundred directory, it's presented.
Okay, you have it for you, October fourth, two thousand nineteen, municipal statements. At that point, we were one-third of the way through the year. So if you do these weekly, you'll see the monthly, revenue is over spent for six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Year-to-date, it was a deficit of one point two million dollars, which, um, is indicative of the early months of the year. We will see that turn around in November and December as, um, the national elections run, so. It's not an unexpected outcome. Cash balance is three point six million dollars, I'm sorry, I found extra one in Prime South, and do not have eleven million dollars. Grant's home is great, but, uh, I guess I said it wrong. Um, laws here today, distributions are up four point six two percent. Um, higher lower tax here today is down forty-five percent. And then we briefly discussed that, um, maybe with last month's things, and I was looking, I was looking to see if there were any changes in the law, and how that was being viewed, but actually, that's not the case. It's actually getting a little bit more of a percent now. So, um, I'm thinking we just have a lot of car sales right now, if they don't, maybe you let us let it change that would, um, we might have to have in that much, but we'll just keep watching that very carefully. On page two, we have a cash balance in plus six, a little over six million dollars. For the month of October, some of the major things we did, we spent three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in October. Um, two hundred and seven thousand was on dishes and drains, seventy-seven thousand on sidewalks, two thousand on cemetery and Roosevelt Paris Center, and fifty-four, fifty-four thousand dollars. We started, um, having some ventures roll in on that. Um, page three, plus five, we still have, we have cash balance of one million, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. The amount we are hoping for the conference center is only three and, three and four thousand. The county has thousand, one million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Um, the cash we have on hand is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars more than what we are showing for both for conference center, because that's the eight, because we've been earning on the buzz and plus five. center, because that's the eight, because we've been earning on the buzz and plus five. Norris Street Commons Fund, we have not paid out any expenditures for the year, um, the cash balance there is $333,000. Roosevelt Harris only for the center, we have grant money that's coming in, $30,000 transferred over $45,000 from the general fund, our main income of $4,500, contributions $600, a little bit of interest, so we have actually, it was a paid $1,000. Um, money expenditures, uh, $100,000 for a net debt of $19,000. Um, but we have a cash balance of $2700 that net deficits because we spent down money that we had at the beginning of the year. Um, we've paid out $45,000 as a general fund so far, uh, budget for the year for transferring money able to Roosevelt Harris is $90,000. So we transferred across for behalf of the money that we had budgeted already at the end of, um, October, which is only four months, however, um, some of the grant money did not come in as quickly as it's supposed to, so I'm not concerned about that, that we're already able to get back out of the half of the, um, I mean, we both, we're general fund to, that we should see a catch-up in the grant money this time again. On page four, the sanitation fund, uh, see the sanitation building, so, $600,000, pretty much these, $900,000, small amounts of penalties made return, and of course, uh, the amount that we transferred into the street lab bill, $860,000. But we also have that as an offset expenditure that we paid to the escrow camp for the street name, it's like cleanup, operating expenses for the sanitation, uh, possibly $410,000, which gives us a net, a net of $201,000, cash balance, that's October 31st, $398,000. We'll pay this air sanitation bills that we paid, there's about a tax pickup runs around $121,000, $122,000 every month, so not the biggest surprises there. Some of our utility fund, uh, as we collect the money in, um, we want to put that, that we have a net of $30,000, and that amount is going outside of this, we collect all the taxes and everything, or, um, 27,000 yards to that balance, you'll see that when we did the next one. Um, so there's a cash balance in, in $170,000. There were another 100 grand control, track control, or any expenses for recreation for facilities managed by the county across October. Uh, we did have some, I know we probably don't know about the fees that were paying for subsides and power, uh, business and the incoming athletic progress, we did pay some money out of those things, so we'll see that, that balance change. Last page is Roosevelt Lawrence Center, and basically it was only normal operating, um, expenditures for salaries, and, and, and supply of these for Roosevelt Lawrence, uh, these.
Any questions from Ms. Mills? I'd like to ask a question, item number eight. Motion to approve financial report, second.
Second.
Motion second to accept the financial report for October 31nd, April 31st, as presented by Ms. Mills. Any further questions, comments? Here in, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Our motion carries. And thank you. We had item number four, consider approval of work order number three, amended the architectural services contract with Gunn Meyer Hocke regarding oath of conference center. Drum is presented.
Good evening, Mr. Layer, Commissioners. Tonight, we are looking at the, the oath for conference center project. At our last meeting on December 4th, after much discussion, thought the commission, uh, Utahe, approved the agreement based on the foundation construction. Uh, there are two stipulations with that vote. Uh, the one was that it was subject to soon to turn amendments to the passage of the contract, because I believe we were ready to, even though it's phase one, it's sub-phases, and we'll be able to stop it, whatever we want to. The second part was that it was subject to approval of the change order, or actually referred to as the amendment, uh, to our contract with the Gunn Meyer Hocke. Uh, who presented with that work order? Which is that channel title, number three. And so, uh, that, that, I think that changed allowed for the redesign of the center, that we would be smaller square footage, or we would set a fixed project budget. The commission asked it to go before the finance committee, it did last week. The finance committee went through the discussion, looked at all the alternatives, and the recommendation was, uh, instead of setting a fixed dollar amount, not knowing what you may come back as a product, the finance committee decided that they would like to see it be about 18,000 per feet. And so, not knowing still, there would have to be some more than redesign, of course, and my ass, I'm sure you would have to come back, if they had the chance, with a change design, we're leaving tonight at this change order for this work order that would allow them to. We have representatives from the, from the, I appreciate that. Get questions regarding. I know the additional square footage I think we're going to, is seven twenty-five, so it's a little change.
We also want to know the cost of things, if that cost of things.
So, um, good evening, appreciate the opportunity to be here, Gunn Meyer Hocke, Gunn Meyer Hocke, and I'm here to answer your questions. Uh, we, we have heard, uh, recommendations from your finance committee, and we think that we can do a center that is something, uh, at 18,000 per feet, much more of the lines of, uh, outline that we presented at the meeting, uh, on the seventh floor. We also did a quick study of what would be to leave some of the more square footage and leave as far a quarter, what we presented on the quarter would be to reduce the building to that line. We've also taken a look at what would be to keep the footage on G Street, as well as the footage on Newcastle Street, and just remove this, and that's a little bit more than 18,000 per feet. With 18,000 per feet, we're satisfied, we can leave the target goals. We've also had the opportunity now to be, uh, like, uh, phone conference with the functional office construction, that are already starting to identify a lot of different ways, we can achieve cost saves, is still providing the best value, some of those, uh, you heard about on the seventh floor, we identified several more, so, uh, although we haven't officially determined this, we're already thinking about how to give you the best center for the best possible price. And will you answer any questions? The total amount of the change order, uh, which is really more accurate to follow, the work order, uh, is, uh, gonna be $170,000.
The thing that really concerns me is, we started off with $20,000 per foot. Now, we've only come down 2,000 per feet. We still have a set of price, maybe we all set a budget. We're gonna, we're gonna be right back here, and we, we have got to set up a budget for the project.
Right, well, I actually thought that we did Elkins contract at risk, took a risk with me that they would tell us exactly what they think, we can, we can work it down to not exceed, uh, in that aspect. But we could set a budget as to, let's say, $5 million, they would give us exactly with all the pictures and whatever, and we buy, we can do it ourselves, or we have them doing, so it's basically, you're right, I think a budget, we do need to be set as to, we would not exceed just this price right here. And maybe 20,000 per feet, maybe 18,000, maybe we end up being, this is.
Let me speak on behalf of the finance committee, we recently came up with square footage, because in our last meeting, we had all around the, on April 1st, since this may, this may. And the bottom line is, once we get a square footage, we set, we're set on what we're going to build, then we can get a price through, uh, you know, Elkins, we'll get a price through them, and then there's something that we, if, if we, the job market won't pay, then you go, okay, how do we get this down to where we need to be? And then we move it down. If, if, if it takes, okay, well, we don't need to build this tower, let's not build the tower, even though it looks steadily pleasing, and all those things, uh, maybe we don't, you know, do certain things, so, so does we get the pricing down to where we need to be? We need to, we need to know, first of all, what we're gonna build, and what square footage is going on? And that's, that's, that's where my committee decided that we would recommend to the mission that we, uh, from 17, 18,000 per foot, what we said. Anyway, that ranking, put it together, let us know the cost, and then we'll move forward from that point.
You know, Matt, what's in my, I really like that idea. The only, uh, issue that I had with that was, uh, paying, um, this architect $170,000 more just to cut off, um, $2,000 per foot of conference center. Uh, and this change order is costing us that kind of money, um, whereby if, if Elkins would go ahead and figure it out, then we decide exactly where we want to be. We, we have issues with square feet handling, so we have to decide which one might drive it. Uh, and I don't mind either or, but we got to decide, it's gonna have to be either one of them. That's not, and I don't mind either one, I have the right to hold either one of them.
And to clarify, $170,000 would be, when we redo construction outcomes, we clearly did not do that until you guys had something that you had been presented with, that gave you budget target and square footage and decided that you're all satisfied with, we were not gonna run it there, get the building re-engineered, and, and re, like, ninety-two floors, until you are able to come back to you with Elkins, and we've had preliminary discussions, and I think those are very fruitful, about what you can achieve in 17, 18,000 per feet, uh, and what it's gonna be look like. And it would also have decision packages, for example, you said the tower, or maybe it has to do with some other aspects of the building, and say, well, we eliminated that, we can save X dollars, and that's, having to have new building, step on the brakes a little bit, or step on the gas a little bit, we need to.
So I'm just worried about, you making a change that gonna cost $170,000. Now, if you don't make a change, would it cost $170,000?
The $170,000 is gonna do to redo the construction.
But if, if you don't make a change, would it cost him $170,000?
If you went back to the building that was, uh, presented to you about a year ago, which was actually about 22,500 per foot, then it would not cost $170,000, we already have those drawings, uh, almost complete. We would want to work with Elkins to be able to figure out, again, do we want to, you know, colonize a little bit, then you're, you're back to the, where it should work, which is, it seems to be over the resources to work with it.
Well, I still have the opinion we need, we need a budget, because we've been down that path. But what, we're, what, where is the community willing to commit? And we've got a whole, we've got 2 million, 2.7, not quite, 2.7 million left. I don't think you can build much for that price, so, you know.
Well, I'm thinking, as we, as we look at presentation, Jim presented here, about $3 million, it was a whole lot less than $5 million, for, for some borrow to, to make up that sum, uh, in that, and already, they've already, um, allocated money for paying debt, and debt, all that, but it's just, that, I understand, but how about, as you say, $2,000? Well, no, no more $2,000, it is.
It's only over $5,000.
Didn't you say in the drawing, you said the board, which kind of budget, can we mention the project?
We thought we did, uh, and we had discussions, uh, on December 4th, the number that I calculated frequently was $5.80, that's what we discussed with Elkins Construction, and what we showed in this plan, we discussed that that was a reasonable target.
Well, that's, that's basically, yeah.
So we feel proud that we can come back to you with the design, with the, with the actual, you know, monetary, uh, budget that you're bringing about.
So, basically, to put this together, uh, $170,000, uh, that, that's all we need to pay for that, or do we have any other fees of, of tax?
So, the $170,000 to make the changes, the fees for the beginning of the session, the construction phases would be the same as they were previously, so there will be no increase. $170,000 to go back and do the construction documents over again, because they were completely from the original footprint design.
So that's only in addition that we would have to pay, but would that pay the fees anyhow?
Yeah, the increment is actually somewhat less than that, because, uh, we say it's only a fee, but construction documents will be proof paid, the increment's over about $145,000. First of all, I'm just gonna go all the engineering, I see you, but.
And cutting out, cutting out that, that part, is what part you're cutting out? I know not another revenue.
So what we'd like to do is preserve all the revenue generating space.
Right.
Uh, and mostly eliminate the extraneous space and some of the other, uh, what we call back the house space.
Yeah, we've had a interview, they've talked to us, say our warming kitchen was a little more than a little thing, is that's what, that's something?
The kitchens that we have that are programmed in the design, in a way, have been designed by a professional food service consultant, with exactly the census for the size, meetings and size, banks that you want to hold, so they will be more than that.
As a table, it's a catering.
It's a catering kitchen, that's right, we're not gonna try and cook 450 steaks on site, but we're gonna be able to keep 450 steaks hot until it's time to serve them.
Catering, not full service?
Catering, not full service, that's correct.
So you put, put to Mr. Chek?
Please.
Well, the thing, the thing coming down, trying to explain something that, we are concerned about, $170,000. Well, our, uh, Commissioners, uh, in, uh, Mr. Drum's presentation, um, he said, uh, change order anticipated, losing nine, presented the work session with $5,000 reduction in square footage, apart from $7,000 remaining, and set the budget for $520 million. So, uh, percentage provision was in basically reduced from 5 million to 3.3 million. So, uh, as he has presented to us here, uh, you can see that, um, this conference center has gone down from a mark of $5 million to 3.3 million, which is a little bit more palatable than, than, than before, but we also have, uh, the debt service, uh, will be approximately reduced by $120,000 a year, which is gonna be used to help pay off the debt, you see the fact? So, uh, if any other comments or... Or anything you have to issue about this, please let me know before I ask for a vote. Okay, uh, here in the, um... Okay, uh, hearing that, um, I asked for a motion to consider approval of a work order in which we admitted our potential services contract with one body called Chek. I have a motion to have a second, uh, concerning the approval of the work order. Are there any questions or comments?
What, what I just said, it's not even been a work order, but for the sake of the record, if we're looking at approximately eighteen thousand square feet, you have, uh, you have a fine, are you looking at the section of the missions right now?
Yes, that's what I said.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're suggesting at this point.
Did you make that part correct, or is there a correction to it?
Unless we want a lower budget.
We said, this was, we said five million.
The five million is the lower budget that we're actually, that's how.
I don't have to sort of lower budget.
Yes.
But we as a commission, if we so choose to, we could set a lower budget.
Oh, you could tonight, or you're, when it comes back, you could, obviously, you're with the architect and the contractor, you can adjust it down if you want to at that time as well. You came back, it was still, it was a little higher than certain finishes and changes you could use at certain point.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
Mayor President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
So, Madam Motion, Harris, um, and, um, you have orders to go ahead and, um, work with that amendment, please? Get it back to the court. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Item number five. Still approval for purchase, fifty dollars gift cards, full-time employee, twenty-five dollars gift card, part-time employee, or, uh, yes, sir.
No, you are. Yes, sir. And sometimes we come forward to the commission each year with the neck of the budget. We just have a budget report, uh, from the finance director. We found there's, uh, savings in our budget this year, and so we don't budget it each year, because we don't know where we're going to be at this time of the year, but we have a request to come forward tonight to provide gift cards to our city employees as a year-end bonus, and with the service of fifty dollars for full-time employees and twenty-five for part-time. Currently, on the rules of, you have one hundred eighty-seven full-time employees and ten part-time employees, and that came up to a total cost of one thousand six hundred dollars. One thousand six hundred dollars. I'm sorry?
How many full-time?
One eighty-seven. It's a little higher than it was last year, we had, uh, we filled some decisions.
How many temporary reviews?
Ten part-time, one hundred eighty-seven full-time. So, the two hundred fifty dollars for the part-time would be nine thousand three fifty for the full-time, total of nine thousand six hundred.
Okay. Commissioner, realize we have some good employees, uh, and, uh, they have worked hard during this year, but we've seen a lot of, uh, uptake and a lot of things. Our services have been presented to our, our, uh, residents, uh, citizens, so, uh, it was a little bit.
I'd like to know if we approve the, uh, gift card.
Second.
Uh, motion second, second, uh, Commissioners, uh, for approval, approval of the gift cards and present discussion. Hearing that, all papers raised right hand. Madam Motion, Harris, in the absence, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Uh, item number six, consider approval of contract amendment for roadway resurfacing of various streets. Mr. Gerald Amerson, our, one of the works and, in here.
So, again, this item is for a contract amendment for our resurfacing contract. As you know, we've, uh, only one resurfacing contract, um, that I should have finished up, the resurfacing contract, except also, my, uh, strike, we have that too. But we would like to add to that, um, as we mentioned, I've got our, our, the main funds for this year, which we have applied for, there's, um, the main funds that we expect to get from GDOT of two hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. We would use those as main funds, uh, to continue working down our paving list, continue paving, some, some roads on our paving list that weren't in the worst condition. It just so happens that many of those are adjacent to our L Street project between, um, I guess it's J or K Hill, um, or J Hill, between Berbersville and, and L Street project. They're in pretty bad condition, and L Street is resurfaced, they're going to, they're going to look really bad in this. So, we continue working down our paving list with that money. Also, this contract amendment includes roadway paving at Palmetto and Greenwood Cemeteries, who asked us to let them to get a price for that project, um, which we did. This contract record has followed us certainly capable of, and in that course too, they give us a price of one hundred sixty-seven thousand eighty dollars for paving roadways in Palmetto, Greenwood Cemeteries, and that, that's basically the perimeter roads in Palmetto, more to the south, and the back perimeter road, and in Greenwood, uh, Central Road, I believe it's called Camal Road. It's paved to almost the center of the cemetery, we continue north to the fence, and west towards the back of the cemetery. So, including the, the main additional paving of the main funds and the cemetery paving, that is a total contract amendment of three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Three hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven and four sixty dollars and seventy-nine cents.
This, this work will begin immediately, complete in about ninety days?
Yes, sir, the work, um, go ahead and, and try to get the contract working immediately on the cemeteries. The, the paving, a lot of the paving, a couple, paid place in Florida, so we've got L Street paving, mobile, and I'm bringing in, I followed that out at the same time.
Would you mind with sewer, I'm sorry, sewer replacements or upgrades or anything that you've done, or?
No, ma'am, I don't have any.
There's just research.
Man on top of us, of all the kind of this, is to be strictly research.
And, and this is good, Gerald, because, um, Gerald, um, because we never hear about the accomplishments that, that are being achieved through the efforts of this commission. We have done, like you said, you sent us information, about fourteen point two amounts of paving, resurfaces, or, um, we've got several, uh, sewer drainage projects, just one, uh, that this stuff has been, uh, the applicable following part of where this commission became, or the commission that you see before you now. So, we never hear anything from anybody about the achievements that this commission has done and is doing for the infrastructure. We always hear about, oh, we're not doing this, or we're not doing that. Um, but we never hear anybody, uh, come in, we, we only see certain people when it's time to come up with juicy items. We never hear anything else from anybody, um, to say, uh, you know, and we don't expect it. It is, it's, it's the beast of this business. But we have, if nobody else is going to top our horn, I'm going to top this commission's horn. Whether we agree on everything or agree to disagree on some things, um, we have accomplished a lot, and we have set in place and are doing things for the infrastructure and the future of the city of Lonsdale. So, I want to tell you thank you, because I know when you get the brunt of a lot of stuff coming from up here, um, so, and it takes a lot to stand there. It doesn't take much to come in and, and bring a complaint and not bring a solution, but it takes a lot to bear the burden of making the decision. So, I want to tell you thank you, and I want your staff, and I want the city of Lonsdale's employees, um, and tell you Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Yeah, Brad. Uh, we've got one hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars of paved cemeteries, and we're saying that we're going to take that out of the cemetery's slot?
Yes.
That's definitely not what the cemetery's slot was intended for. It was intended to do maintenance and, and not paving. Do we not have enough money in the paving?
I would have to look at our roadway numbers to see if, um, this is a L Street, a backdoor project, which is not going to be allowed, it depends on the cost that comes back for the backdoor project, and see if that order number is.
The, the restoration money can't be used for maintenance, it has to be used for capital life, or so. It has to be construction or made construction, so.
Here redo the fencing?
We are using fencing, and we have used a fair amount of it to do, to run our fence. It does do very, very old, star, grave restorations, where there's no fan that we can contact.
And that's what money was put in there and intended was to do, and, and did you tell them that we can't do it?
No, we can do that, but the restoration of, of facilities, fencing, or, um, that's a capital expense. But if you make it such as we're going or something like that, no, we couldn't do it.
I didn't say that, I'm not saying that.
As we need to clarify.
Have money in paving account, and this only, the cemetery's slot cemetery account is not allocated or intended for paving. The paving came up later on, so.
I would, I would recommend, I mean, we do have, we got, we, we got, we got, but I recommend leaving that money in there, continue to do what we've done, we've done a lot of this.
City of Palmetto Cemeteries, we here, we there, we here, and there have never been any maintenance done. It's not, it's not true there, it needs to be, and we need to prove that that's how money was put in this slot, in the cemetery account, or we're supposed to do it exactly, not any.
Let me add this question, is paving not maintenance improvement?
It is, we've got money, we, we have paving account, we're creating that.
We have a, uh, paving account for cemetery?
We have, yeah, we have paving roads, we've paved roads, we've beat roads, all that is said and done. And I would.
Well, let me, let me suggest this, if we, if we move forward and go ahead and pay these, these, these roads, we need that, uh, big funding or whatever, we've got, we pay it back to the cemetery. Just, let's, let's get this done, let's not hold this project up, because I believe it was you who was occasionally there pushing this project and, and, and asked for us to make sure that we get these roads paid. And our staff has come up with a way to get it done expeditiously, and now you want to say, don't do it?
No, I think we're approaching the fire, and I don't think.
What are you saying?
I'm saying pave the roads, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying take that out of different account. Clearly, clearly, that's what I'm saying. They need to be paid, they need to be paid out of different account. You've got money in the cemetery's slot to do different things, but not paving. It's pretty clear. So, I was surprised when I saw this, that, that this was going to be our staff deciding to, to pay it for who, in there, and then I. I think we need to rethink.
Well, it was a recommendation by city engineer and also our city manager to, to do it that way, uh, Mr. Casey. Um, I, I realize too that, uh, and next month, we will be putting together our slot list for twenty-twenty as well. Uh, I don't want to delay anything, uh, but, uh, we made the money here, and, uh, my question is, how soon will they be able to pay these roads?
Cemetery route?
Yes.
We're going to talk to them and try to get them to, on that, it's, it's, again, that's the first thing.
Maybe, maybe a day, I don't know.
I have a special contractor about to take it, so I hesitate to tell you the date.
Yeah, because, of course, of course, it's really moving on my mind.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think I talked to the contractor, his family, so they, and I get that.
That would be great.
Let's, let's go back a little bit, go back a little bit.
I'm saying, you, you can, go ahead, Mr. Casey.
I do not want the paving in the cemetery to come out of the cemetery's slot account. I don't think so, I think we've got roads paying in money, those are roads to the city out there. And I want to ask you, how many miles of dirt roads can we have here in this city?
Miles of dirt roads?
I said dirt roads, yeah. Those, those are dirt roads in, in the city, they should have been paved at the first time, but.
You're referring to just the alleys and that sort of?
I have roads, I mean, how many of those miles of roads?
I don't know that big of a head.
Do we have unpaid roads other than what we have in the city here?
Yes. We have Lord Street Lane, which is actually the, the alley.
Alley, alleyway.
Major residential stores.
Well, I'm not talking the alleys or no, the roadways, we, we really need to know how many miles of unpaid roads we have in the city.
I can't think of any outside of the alleyways and the.
I mean, the cemeteries.
Or the cemetery. It's actually, it's actually, I said, so long.
There's no difference in the roads here, or the cemeteries, in the roads that we drive on the way out here. So, there's really, I'm not asking to hold up, please, understand, to hold up paving, I won't be done bad. I really do. If you remember correctly, I answered.
That's what he said. That's what he said.
And, and so, we have done, please, we need to come out of the roads and pay the account. Those are roads, unpaid roads in the city.
Well, Mr. Casey, what I really suggest is that, uh, we got, we got a slot coming up soon, uh, and also those funds can be, uh, we put, put back in, and a matter of fact, we could, uh, take a opportunity to take out a joint fund, and also repay a joint fund back with the slot fund or something similar. Whatever we can do, however we can do, uh, we can put on a slot for twenty-twenty, or we can, as you say, uh, not use those funds right now, uh, and use the fund out of the account, and then see how much will be left with the backdoor and park, uh, subdivision, resurfaces. Uh, there's a number of ways to get it done, uh, it's just that practice was one of the ones that, that was chosen. Uh, I see you that I agree with that.
Well, there's plenty of money in the paving part of the slot, or whatever.
We got.
You take one hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, that's all.
So, you're suggesting that we not, we start with, or, or pay streets in the city other than the cemetery, instead of, take one hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars from the, money that's injected here, and move it to cemetery?
Come on, give me a.
I'm, I'm asking the question, Mr. Casey, because our staff have taken time to come up with a way to get a project done, and we asked them to expedite it, and then now we're telling them, don't do it.
Well, how, how much money do you have in the slot money in the account? Paying roads with it? Look in place, if there's over two thousand dollars in there, you don't have to take it out of the cemetery, of course.
So, we ask this question, so we, we want to, that's it, but we have that key. Can we not proceed on the, we have now, and reverse?
But it hasn't been done yet, that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm just saying, can, is, is that not the same purpose, is that not achieving the same? It's still not achieved, what you're asking, we can, and we're still moving on from this point that we're at right now?
As, as long as we don't complete the cemetery account that we've got to walk.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, just, just reverse it, so it's still accomplish what you're asking, and still we'll be able to move on with this tonight, with the, with the understanding that we'll reverse what needs to be reversed, but all that's still being accomplished, that's been asked to be accomplished.
I'll welcome Mr. Casey to that.
Thank you.
I have one further question. I'm complicated, Nancy. But if the payment balance for the cemetery restoration slash renovation is roughly two hundred fifteen thousand dollars, what then could we use that towards as capital improvements, if that's what slot money has to be used for?
We, uh, we've done some stronger work with it, so. We've done some stronger work with it so far. We've done some grave restorations in partnership with the Oak Grove Cemetery Association. Fifty percent of some of the older graves that we could not find families to repair. That are natural older. We've been working on a lot of our fence, a little fencing out of Greenwood as well. And so those are some of the things we can do. Graves themselves, we have a lot older in all three cemeteries. Older brick structures we could use some reinforcement, but yet we can't find family members that are either available or live or willing to repair. We have an obligation to keep some graves out of the water. Some cases they're broken open. So we've been using some of that effort. So those are some of the things we can do.
So do you foresee completing that two hundred and fifteen thousand in a form and fashion that will be improvements to the cemetery?
I don't. I don't think we'll use it all that fast. I will say that the party is already committed and that's why we use the one hundred and sixty-seven. Is that what it is? I think you have a little bit of extra remaining there, but not a lot. So a little bit of allocated. The rest is already been done. So we will spend it down. There might be what, five or six that would be committed after this?
I believe so.
So there will be still a little bit of money remaining. But to be honest, we don't use it on any of those. I don't know what we spent that large amount on in real quick time. I do know that we are looking to spend this slot down and show the roof.
Yeah, we've never done any maintenance out of any cemetery, period.
And we're using more buildings. We're building, we're using more building repairs and roofing and we do such things as that as well. So that's another thing.
I guess we'll need to discuss that. I think we're doing the cemetery.
I know that they can do some work. Fencing, roads, buildings, we'll pick that up. And I'd be glad if the commission wants to take it out the other side. The city engineers and the J D could do that and try to allocate the other hundred thousand dollars. We've tapped the plan a lot to do it quickly. My understanding was when this was brought up, when it was discussed that there was cemetery products that could be used towards it, so we didn't initially jump to it. But the commission made the reasons that they were using, so that's the direction. The commission goes into a lot of use for the street, so that's fine.
I think we just gave the room to move on from this point. We're still going to achieve what we're trying to achieve. Mr. Casey, Commissioner Casey has a point. We're still going to achieve what he's asking to be done and we're going to achieve a one goal of getting it done, what needs to be done that has not been done after the cemetery.
Is that what we're doing? No.
It's not been done. We're going to get it done now. We're going to do it. He's moved there.
All right. Want to make a motion?
No, we all go ahead and make your motion.
This is the House motion that to approve the amendment to roadway surfacing for various streets considered wrong and in the city cemetery.
Second?
Motion second for approval of the roadways surfacing various streets and cemetery. Any further questions, comments?
With the understanding that what has been discussed shall be done.
Like all the comments have been presented.
I do want to say this. What you've got left in the cemetery is two hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So if you take one hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars out of the count, you're going to need to wire any funds to do any improvements in the way. And that's money was there to do what the city had never done. In Oak Grove, Greenwood and pound out of cemetery.
Okay. And further comment? Here in the all in favor, please raise your right hand. All folks? Are you abstaining?
We're going to weigh that one in the cemetery.
It's not, it's not on the table.
Mr. Casey, are you, are you agreeing or are you not agreeing?
I'm agreeing with you. But if I pay the...
So that's all in the firm, please. Okay. All right. There's a comment by Mr. Casey. All right. Thank you. Okay, as we move forward, move right along. Apologize to everybody sitting there, long road that you set along. That reminds me of our Christmas lot. I wonder what was happening then. And what it'd been good to have a beer for at Christmas.
We gave downtown government authority a lot of accolades, whatever. Failed so they would know about some cushions.
I've been told they're on order. I haven't seen them yet.
It's like checking the mail too, you know?
They've been taking measurements, apparently assistant city manager and the case that they've been taking measurements and everything.
They're taking measurements?
They've already done that. It's in the batches.
Cushions are not on agenda. Oh, so? It's like not on agenda, but at my discretion, not brought up. Okay. All right. Item number seven, appointments, board and commission. First board appointment, the bronze historic preservation board, we have one appointment and that is to fulfill the unexpired term of Miss Leanne Williamson. Term expires on six thirty twenty. Our majesty is... You want it early?
Unexpired.
Unexpired, okay. So we have two names that have been submitted. Ms. Hedy Bernstein and Mr. Charles W. Day. They have provided some information that's in your package as well, so...
Mr. Val took the recommendation that we let Ms. Hedy Bernstein for an unexpired term of William A. Brown.
Second. Oh, it's been promptly motion second for to appoint Ms. Hedy Bernstein for the unexpired term of William A. Brown. I'm ready for discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Madam clerk, please give a Mr. Bernstein and I know...
Thank you.
All right. Our next appointment is the appointment to the pilot commission. We've got one appointment there too as well.
I'll make the note that we approved Fleming Martin for the pilot commission.
Second.
And this is to fill the term, unexpired term of Mr. William A. Brown. Bill Brown. So it's been submitted that Ms.... Ms. Fleming Martin be appointed to fill the unexpired term of Mr. William Bill Brown. In further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Madam clerk, please give a Mark and I know appointment. Our next appointment is to the keyboard. We have one appointment. We have three, two, we have two individuals applying for the position. Mr. Michael Liam is asking for to be reappointed and Mr. William Bill Bernstein is asking for a appointment.
I'll make the note that we reappoint Michael Liam.
Second.
It's been motion second to she is for the reappointment of Mr. Michael Liam. In further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. I'm motion carries too, so please inform Mr. Liam that he has been reappointed. All right. We're down to item number eight, considered... Serious display of action for alcohol sales violation. Customer Mire LLC, also known as Fountain Package Store. Also, Elliot presented.
Good evening. I spoke with park management this evening. The owner in which really should be here to answer to this issue is not here. And what I was told is not going to be here on the fifteenth either. So with that said, I don't know how you would handle this at this point because we do have representation for the store, but they're not the ones that were directly involved in applications from 2015 to this year.
See the attorney, how do we proceed? Their visitor's not here. You have some tea?
Is there someone here representing or is there no one here representing this?
The new park owner is here. However, he was brought in at the end of the year and...
Which year?
This year. And all the documents that need to be answered for is the other owner who is not here, who is the one that needs to be talking.
You passed up the known person not here for what we did.
Is the person that's here the application they submitted for renewal? Is that correct?
Yes.
Are they in compliance with ordinance? Would they, would they, for example, the city's?
For his, yes. There's nothing that would prevent him from having that license since it's just he's on it with an LLC and per ordinance, all members have to... Okay, so technically speaking, both pass what they would need to hold the alcohol license except for it was fraudulently obtained back in 2015 and every year since with the primary owner. The owner, park owner that is there now checks out, lives where he says he lives and passes the background.
So we, so we've got violations, what have you, on prior levers that we not handled. We've not handled, but we have something here present that is legally applicable and compliant, what have you?
I think that's right.
Half and half. One owner still has fraudulent information on the application this year. The other owner does not. The owner that is needing all applicable stuff is here tonight.
Okay, so you got two. Okay, so for what's the current stuff? You've got one person that is legally viable and one person that's not?
Correct.
Okay, so...
Is there two applications?
No, it's one application. So the application is broken up with, if you have an LLC, you put your LLC down in the application. Then it comes down to the owner and the manager. So for somebody that has a partnership, you have the LLC, one owner, and the manager is the second owner. So the second owner slash manager is here tonight. All of his stuff is valid. All of his stuff is legal. The primary owner, his stuff is not valid. He has a progress that he does not live at and he's been using for all the application processes since 2015. We, illegal obtaining or fraudulently obtaining a liquor license to begin with back in 2015, it just was never caught until the sheriff.
Okay, so we can't go back to 2015. So we have to deal with what's present now. So to me, the application that's represented should have been redone.
If that's the case, if there's a present application that is legally compliant for... I mean, can they, that's, I don't think you can take into consideration the current application or application in the past, so 2015 to present. Each year came forth, city commission without, and it was ratified and approved. I don't think there's any, the present city city commission can do that. So definitely Marshall and the class have clearly vetted the application. I would try to look at this as a microcosm of this year's application. If this year's application is in compliance with city, the commission can consider, the city commission can consider one that there may be issues with as well, but if this year the application is in compliance, then I think the commission can consider it.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
It's not compliant.
That's, that's what I was getting to. Just still what we currently have before. That stuff is done. We can't go back to that. We don't know about that prior review stuff. Right, we're dealing with what we have now. So is that application?
It would need to be corrected because no. Still, again, a false document was submitted, which was the address of one of the owners who continues to use an address he does not live at. He doesn't even meet the state requirements at this time because he has an owner, a park owner, that does meet the residency requirements. That satisfies the state level. What's not satisfied is per section three three of our ordinance, any information that is knowingly untruthlessly omitted, information shall be paused for denial or non-renewal and if the license has been granted, shall be paused for revocation. So we can move forward if they actually complete, the one owner completes the, his part and actually puts a valid address because it's not going to be Georgia, it's going to be New York. As far as the other owner, his address checks out. He lives there. He is a resident owner.
Have you been in touch with that, with the owner?
I have been many times to include their council as well. So at this point, he is out of country. However, if it is as easy as him just filling out the correct information, I would just be able to verify with them that they can do that before the end of the year. Because they, at the state level now, are considered a new, a new application because they've added a donor. So their process with the state might be a little bit more lengthy going into the end of the year. So if they did this, we need an application before the end of the week so that I can get it to them in time for them to get their state report.
So have the parties been advised that the documentation that had been presented is not accurate information or is not legally valuable information? They need to redo or resubmit that a proper application?
So the resubmitting, no, this is all just now and they're listening. So I just need to verify that that is something that they can actually do because the gentleman is over or out of country right now.
Question. Is it legal, an entity, an alcoholic in the state of Georgia living in the state?
Not, not by itself, but if they have a partner and the partner...
Yeah, okay.
Yes, in this.
So basically, all they need to do is change the address?
Correct. They have had it authorized and resubmitted.
Especially take his name off the application and leave that one name on after the drug company. If it's over by LLC, she needs to have the baseball members out. I would never resubmit LLC. I guess it would be possible to put forward a review series. It sounds like it would be a motion to approve the renewal subject to their complying or pleading whatever that means.
Right, we give them opportunity to give them time to do that.
A reasonable amount. We don't want this for reading. We need to be more specific because you still have, you still have the law that says if that stuff is not done as we requested to be done or as you requested to be done, then there is still to be calls for revocation.
So is Representative Harry from that?
Yes. Do you want to come up?
You can.
Mr. Howard?
Yes. Do you understand what we're saying?
Yeah.
Will you be able to apply with our stipulations for, for the name of, get the name of ours?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, updated, but I have to talk to the...
So could it be done by January fifteenth?
Oh, it's before the end.
So he's got to have, he's got to know the rights and he's out of country.
The technology is...
Trying to work with the people, so we do that.
That should be accomplishable. This stuff should have been known before this application was created.
I would say so by the end of the year, that is a day service.
Uh huh. By the end of the year, that's certain. I'm understanding that it can be accomplished.
So what we're saying is by the end of the year, if you become, if you comply, we would like to issue a license for some to you getting... for some, to you, you're being compliant by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Not on January one, you're not a day of operating. So what, what do I, how do you want this policy? How is that?
So we making it known now, uh, that, uh, we can't go back and change fifteen, sixteen, no seventeen or eighteen, but coming forward for twenty, when you know you submitted an illegal application, make sure that all the information is correct, so we won't have to go through all this. It definitely say this, that's the march?
Yes, ma'am, and that's what I think this year, which is why we have to hook there.
And we need to have a screening process because if you go, if the screening process was in place, that, and processing of these applications, that should have been kicked out, it should never reach this point.
Oh, I agree, the downside is in this position, uh, like I said, President had a train meeting this year, so.
I understand, you're doing awesome job, and I know you're gonna get those screening processes in place.
All right, commissioners, so seeing that we have the consensus up here, however, this is a public hearing, uh, and, uh, we have to open up to the, the audience here, so if there's anyone here who'd like to speak for or against granting this license for Fountain Package Store. If please step forward, speak.
This is actually a public hearing. So if I only.
But, but we, we gonna give the license, so still, right?
This is for the disciplinary action that was brought forward by Deputy Marshall, which she's presented, and they have provided the opportunity. So it's not going to be open to general application, say, as a new license. So if this, if it's the will of the commission, if you're Deputy Marshall, this can conclude that, and we are in motion to approve a renewal subject to them providing accurate information to Deputy Marshall. By you.
Thank you, keep us on track, sir.
They specifically.
What's up here?
Well, it is a public hearing here, but it's only for the ability to the two sides, but they don't have the ability for a general comment.
Well, um, close vote for comments. You know what I just said? Okay, all right, I need to go.
Yeah, I might off the motion that the Fountain Package Store on notice that pending their additional application by December thirty first, the ordinance, um, that the license will be renewed effective ten or twenty eight, or twenty one.
Okay.
Put that, put that revocation part in there. If you put on, on the state, there's potential revocation. If they're, if they do not comply.
If, I, I believe that part is on the study, is that understood?
Yeah.
We need to make it clear.
I'll send out the letter tomorrow, I'll, I'll as well.
We have been filed a motion second for this may have to be commenced, uh, and, um, thanks, sir, this is December thirty first. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Now, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Now I just want to give them a license.
Definitely.
No, good, yes.
All right.
Now I believe there's an additional item.
I, I have eight, eight. Um, consider approval of six of alcohol beverage license, uh, renewal, um, we can take them all at one time, um, there's two of them that's, uh, not eligible, but the first six, reason, I thought, Carrie, Rob Shop, In-N-Out, Rosen Line, Tio, 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 Mary Barf. So I think, uh, I'd like to make a review of the first six.
Second.
The final vote for second for granting of these renewals.
I just want to confirm, there's no issues with any of that, correct? No, there's no issues.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. I most care. I have two not eligible renewals, Blue Door and Downtown Grocery. Uh, details, why they're not eligible?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Blue Door number seven started their application process and then just kind of fell off the wayside and has not completed it. I'm trying to make attempts to call them, but I don't even understand their business for them, I guess they're open every now and then. Um, they got their fingerprints done, but the, uh, the application itself was never paid for or filled out. We came to the office, I walked them through it, told them where they're at, it was completed and notarized, and that was the end. Um, Downtown Grocery, just spoke with the owner tonight, there is a lease that was submitted, um, it was supposed to be a change of ownership. Um, the lease that was submitted was not accurate and so contingent upon them submitting, uh, the updated lease agreement that he has advised he can do for sure before next Wednesday, if he nor had any revenue as well.
So that would be also subject to, if they did not submit that and they would not.
Correct.
They would see operating.
Correct.
So, so do we, do we even vote on Blue Door if they didn't even have, if they had a petition?
I'm sure they probably need to done before the end of the year, uh, and it just so happens we don't need to get to January fifteenth, so.
Which I don't think is gonna really affect them too much because they don't, they're not away all the time, so.
I think, I think that, uh, Blue Door, they need to be informed that they're not to serve the grocery alcohol.
They will first speak of January, renew in my staff, when they go around, luckily only this is for a ship, so there it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We need to do that now.
We need a, 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 with the added stipulation that if the commission not provide, Deputy Marshall provides, so thirty first, then that would.
Wednesday, but not next week. So Christmas, ten, or maybe next Tuesday, you go to Tuesday?
You go to Tuesday.
He's gonna Tuesday.
Steve?
Twenty-four.
Okay, um, you the motion for that, please, uh, whatever, City Attorney said?
There like a motion that we, uh, approve the Downtown Grocery renewal, intended upon Deputy Marshall giving information that she needs by Tuesday, December the twenty-fourth.
Second.
Motion second for the full of Downtown Grocery, uh, renewal by, they said, the next Monday, the twenty-fourth, Tuesday. Twenty-fourth, uh, December. Further discussion, comments? I want to pay, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. All right, we, we are almost finished with our print agenda, we down to, uh, City Attorney, item number nine. City Attorney, do you, do you mind taking up, uh, go ahead, sorry, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
First thing on, uh, ordinance is the larger one.
Item number six, ten sixty-five, uh, using scrap tire bits.
These orders have been before, um, on the basis, pulled off the last bill to make sure that, uh, this is a, now, in the city. Prior to the, prior to race, part of, uh, she did, they did not receive a, uh, port of arms back. It was advertised, I don't believe the city clerk's office received, and it's only, and it is here for a brief.
I have one question. On second. Um, section, well, that's page five, section thirteen dash, it's where you take it. I agree, they talked about the performance a lot in the letter of credit. Um, that's, the way I read that, that's while we are in business, so if we need an end of the money, so, but we need a permission such that the city will need notification, or is this opposing or moving? Because we have a huge problem with this, to be moving, and all the tires are left on.
The purpose of that particular section said they do get something, financial assurance, are on, on the records. We leave in the middle of the night, you can call on, for these financial assurance.
We can.
Exactly. That is our original, our, our, that was a little long, please believe.
Okay, uh, so we have, uh, order number ten sixty-five, and then motion in the second. Um, was there a motion?
No.
Well, I need motion please. Motion to approve.
Second.
And motion second, now that the full of, order number ten sixty-five, of chapter thirteen, she has one for full of orders, uh, using scrap tire bits. Any further discussion? Do you get any comments from, uh, when we put it out to, so, all in favor, please raise your right hand? All right, most carries definitely. All right, item number ten, a not, order number ten sixty-six, amid chapter twenty-two, utilities, sir?
Uh, this could, uh, ordinance brought for you, I believe, before this given, uh, this is ordinance, uh, amendments of a request by joint board of steward commission, if you recall. Andrew's still here, Deputy Director of the Joint Board of Steward Commission, uh, also helped present these items, these are ordinance amendments that I believe are helping the joint board of steward to address leads, uh, building issues, how things are built, um, and better stream on the, the lead process. If Eric wants to speak to it, I think there's a president, there's a reputation table in the first row, uh, the only reason it's been delayed until this meeting because, uh, it's not advertised, it's not advertised, and I don't believe it's seen any color comments, and it is really through the first round.
The main thing here is when we, if we did disapprove, there's a hundred customers in the city limits that are gonna get this adjustment tomorrow that would not be handled for today. Now, those are customers that have existing balances that submitted, we wouldn't have qualified a, a, a favorable adjustment, so those people will have a very nice, so precious presentation of the adjustment tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner Verge, borough state, and the director, director of SC. Uh, also presented by our City Attorney, also has been advertised as well, uh, and have, have any comments, Master? So, no comments by you, commissioners, uh, intend motion please?
I'm making a motion.
Item number ten sixty-six, excuse me.
Second.
Motion second for approval of, uh, society, any further questions? I want to pay, please raise your right hand. Most carries, thank you, thank you, City Attorney. Item number eleven? Consider approval of first amendment to the amendment, and we, we state the overall conference center, memorandum of understanding, excuse of amendment, put the claim deed from the county, county, and see their book, closing number.
Are you fair, sir?
Yes, sir.
I believe it's the former former, I believe, not, essentially I tried to remove this name, uh, this is the MOU, amended and restated the MOU that the city had discussed, perhaps improved last year, uh, the extension of time to complete or extension of the construction of the local property center on the piece of property that was formed, and then by the county, uh, that is adjacent to the piece of property downtown, out of the city. Uh, county, or excuse me, city commission approved it to extend to April twenty twenty-one last year, uh, the county did not. Since then, we approached the county, uh, and asked them for a similar extension, the new agreement is substantially similar to the old one, aside from the dates are changed, and it's instead of the April twenty-one, the essential run through April twenty twenty-two. That is, the props are required, the MOU, specifically amended, amended, restated, remember, anybody staying on the other floor block? So required that the quick play the deed from the, um, county and the city also do anything to address, uh, or indicate the same date of twenty twenty-two.
Right.
They approved this, I believe, at their meeting, uh, the meeting in December, which is December fifth, so it is just subject to city commission approval at this point, and we can move on.
Okay, um, comments, commissioners? Hearing none, uh, item ten, motion please?
I make, I make a motion that we approve the first amendment to the amended and restricted overall conference center memo, memorandum of understanding, and execution of amended quick plan deed from Land County to the city of Brunswick, specifying the dates, April twenty, twenty-two.
Second, motion second, uh, for, uh, that memorandum of understanding and, uh, first amendment to the amended and restated, uh, memorandum and further questions? And the quick plan deed to, for the date certain, as you, you mentioned. Uh, no further questions, uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand? All right, I most carries, thank you. All right, now to item number twelve. Consider approval of ground-up assistance agreement as supported and adopted between Brunswick Land and Joint Board of Steward Commission and the city of Brunswick.
Yes, I placed this on the agenda last week, after discussing with Joint Board of Steward, uh, they were twice agreed, so, uh, since then, been some discussion from county attorney's office, think we have, we're gonna do it, we might come together and meet on this agreement as opposed to having them, uh, separately, uh, approved by each government party, so I ask that they.
Okay, before that, I'd like to make a.
Second.
Motion second, for item number twelve, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand? I most carries, thank you. All right. We are at item number thirteen, consider approval of two memorandum of understanding between city of Brunswick and BQK Baseball LLC.
Uh, D, there's two agreements brought in tonight, uh, regarding, uh, agreements between the city of Brunswick and, and, you know, BK Baseball LLC. One MOU is for the construction of a stadium to house a collegiate, uh, summer league baseball team. The others addressing the lease of that, we've been achieving the lease of that stadium between the city, and the ownership agreement which we would see be K baseball. Uh, I am going to yield my time, I believe, EK to present, I would ask that they come up and discuss the nuances of the MOU, it's a questionable, so.
That'd be fine, I mean, actually, a question for you today, what does this MOU, uh, tells, obligates city of Brunswick to?
To negotiate in good faith with.
That's all.
To negotiate with. Yes, uh, if you look at the, both agreements have what I would call parachute courts and then wherein if we are not able to reach a development agreement for the stadium, then the parties can walk away. In the same sense, on the second, if either the lease agreement is not executed, the same thing occurs, that the party walk away. What we, in, in ten years, instead of discussing work through this with the ownership group, uh, to try and come to the table and negotiate openly, the opportunity to do something like this in Brunswick. Um, you know, it's intentionally, um, drafted in the end that allows the two parties to come to the table in good faith and try to negotiate, uh, the best deal for both sides. I do, that's the best way to describe it. Uh, there is a number in there, thirteen million dollars to construct the baseball stadium. Um, that is a high number that is, they could throw around lightly. It is something that both myself and, uh, BQK Baseball, represented by council, uh, and the tremendous amount of research to try to look into how these types of things are financed without burdening or placing big rent, uh, or whole million dollars in taxes considered, uh, as if their council, uh, will likely address the multi-tier system that they researched and looked into. Try to finance instead of doing one loan, selling one person on this line. Uh, but again, the, the details that will need to be worked out, uh, and some of the commissioners here, if there's anything you can talk to, the ownership group, and to understand why this is an opportunity to be brought to the city. Uh, again, for the purpose of my time, unless there's any other questions, yes.
Um, I have a question. And we do this, if it was not site specific, correct?
That's right.
Um, if this was signed tonight, are we obligated not to consider any other opportunities that we have, and for what period of time?
I think what, that is left up to the good faith intended parties, and I think what we did, it would be a promise not to entertain essentially another city pro, pro, like, baseball team coming in and asking, you know, piggybacking and trying to put forth the same type of, of, um, again, there's, you know, the good faith would be that this is less time to negotiate this, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
So basically, for, and I want to say this with public understanding, these MOUs are basically for conversation and negotiation.
That's right.
Nobody's committing thirteen million dollars, nobody's committing eight dollars. That's all, to make it clear, to make it understood.
Any further questions, for, for Mr. Corey? All right, so now, uh.
I'm going to go.
Check.
This, I may, you know, Sunderhouses, BQK Baseball, I would, uh, go to, uh, their, uh, attorney. Please.
Jessica Sellers, with the Coastal Plain League.
Okay, you, you go ahead, and, uh, I know you, you listen to all the comments that were made earlier this morning, I mean, this afternoon. And, uh, you know, you're welcome to, to make a small, uh, answer some of those, uh, for the test.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for having us here. Uh, clearly, this is open for public comment, suggestions, uh, we understand that. Um, and one of the, the things that my wife and I are trying to do is enter into discussions with the city of potential growth opportunity for businesses, residential opportunity, that have various impacts across the city, but then also what it brings and captures into the city from the surrounding communities. Uh, part of our, part of our research, uh, we've taken a lot of time to make sure that we have a plan and we've thought these things through. Uh, I like to say we kind of war game this amongst my team, and, and as well as understanding, we're not the only entity that is coming into the city of Brunswick or proposing something here. Coastal Plain League, the commissioner's here with us, because there is a, a substantial interest from his corporation as well, uh, with us. The actual project that we would like to discuss with you is a multi-sports complex. Um, understanding the MOU does not say something site-specific, we've had communications with the commission and looked at various sites, but then we'll say the city as well as Glendale County. And those things are up for negotiation in talking to the commissioner. In terms of some of the specifics of what this project is, one, our mission statement is to entertain the city and the surrounding communities and give back. And that is one of the things that, if you're bringing business to a community, you need some type of entertainment for the families that are going to come here. Those are what's currently here, which are constituents, constituents and citizens that are here in Brunswick, but also those that will say are the future or the vision of what this project is. So, one of the things that I would point out to, uh, Danielle, my wife, she is, will say, the operations of what this will say project is. Yes, there is a summer collegiate baseball team that is housed in CPL, but there's also the aspects of nonprofits and other items that are specifically related to, say, recreation, and especially for you. So, I'm going to go with her.
Thank you, I appreciate your time today. As you can tell, I actually brought my children back because I'm very passionate about kids. They worked a lot today. Um, but I'm very passionate about kids, and my understanding is the youth is our future, we all understand that. And if we are not giving an opportunity for the youth in the city of Brunswick to participate in sports, to have a place to go, a place that they can walk to, a place that they can know that I've got a coach there, whether it's through Parks and Rec or nonprofit, then I feel that we're missing a major chunk of what we can bring to the city. It's great that we have businesses coming, absolutely floods to the city, but what we're missing is youth, entertainment, and opportunities once the sun goes down. If you go outside right now, and if you look around, there are, yes, there might be some cars over there, but where are they headed? Who are they heading to? We want to make sure that when you drive past a multi-sports facility, the kids are using it. So it's not just about baseball, we cannot drive that one enough, this is not a, just let's bring in baseball. This is, let's have a great thing for three months out of the year with the CPL and a great opportunity amongst all of us, but it's also about what can we offer year-round? Again, as an extent, family-friendly, entertainment, and getting back. And those will be one focus on, that's the major focus here, is what can we give back to the city and what can we do together to continue to build the state of Brunswick? You received an award tonight because you've done such a great job as the commissioner, making sure that roads are paved and that you guys are passionate out behind those roads. We want to make sure that they are part of that with you, so that we can continue to grow with you. And we want to see that everybody in here has an opportunity, so that it's not just about, here's a stadium, it's closed. It's not how that works, it's open, it's for the public, it's so that everyone can use not only the stadium, but every part of it, multi-sport, multi-use.
And there's certain aspects to that, meaning when the vision was put down on paper, we've done a lot of research with our architect, and that design accounted for a lot of, we'll say, environmental things to, to also that aspect of what's year-round. Uh, we're coming out of, there's a lot of things that happen in Glendale County, but is it the right venue of where you're at? Can we bring, for example, the RSM, huge televised event that brings a lot of, you know, heads and beds and forks and cans into Glendale County? Well, they have, host a, a concert on a tarmac over on the island. Why can't that be in a complex in the city of Brunswick that will bring people to stay the night potentially? It brings opportunities for them to dinner before, after, there's so many things that can bring and capture in the city of Brunswick. So when you start talking about debt service and revenue and things like that, there's certain aspects in that MOU that haven't been brought to life. But I'll let Mr. Sellers.
Yes, please do that, I'll probably tell you later.
Yes.
Talking about the MOU. Good morning. Um, yeah, so, we're more than just baseball. Coastal Plain League would be partnering with the, with the, for a franchise, um, and our brand mothers during the summer, but all of our teams operate year-round. And by doing that, they bring multiple different sporting events and sports leisure-type events to the communities that they're in. Uh, the, the most recognized brand in the state currently is the Savannah Management, so we have the making bacon. Uh, but I wanted to, I heard some comments earlier, I wanted to hit on a couple of points about who we are, and give you kind of a apples and apples comparison, if you will, of how I feel that this community can, can support this and this community can thrive as you see this come to fruition. One, the league is going into its twenty-fourth year. We are college summer baseball, we have college baseball players coming to develop and skill turn the summer months. But caliber level of play that we have is very, very highly competitive. We draw a lot of our players, almost seventy percent of our team's, uh, rosters are filled from major team one schools, that's ACC, SEC kids, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Unlike a professional team, we are able to, able to recruit our own kids. So every year, the, they, they now, their roster will be filled with players that they recruit. That could be, uh, young players from Brunswick originally that have left and gone to play, say, a few or something, and have to come back and play in front of their family and friends here. Um, but what it does is it really gives the community a sense of a hometown team, these players, coaches, that are becoming part and part of the community year-round. Now, let me take you back to the late two thousands. Uh, two thousand nine, we moved our headquarters out to a little town called Holly Springs, North Carolina, which is a suburb of Raleigh. At the time, it was about twenty thousand people. As we progressed in that town and creating a, a, an image and whatnot, the town leadership actually came to us to inquire about what would it take to create a golfing franchise? They had nothing but a couple of red fields, they didn't have anything to the caliber that would be necessary to, to give, take care of top college lacrosse players. With that said, in twenty twelve, they passed a bond referendum. At the time that they passed it, it was around twenty-six thousand people in the community. Stadium was built, it was a thirteen and a half year facility built, again, back those years, twenty twelve opened in twenty fifteen. Since twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, there's been a number of events in and outside of just baseball. And to give you a, a comparison there, one, one thing that I got today, literally, was right now, um, from the Parks and Rec director. In twenty seventeen, they hosted our All-Star event, they hosted a week-long national club baseball tournament with eight regional qualifiers that can't even stay in hotels and things like that. And they hosted another major event in addition to others. Just in those three events in one year, the, the economic impact is almost ridiculous. Okay, I say that to you for two reasons. One, twenty twenty is going to repeat that, when you're bringing our All-Star event back, and our All-Star event has grown to take on national and regional television as well as being streamed on NOE.com. Um, this passion here is rooted in Savannah, and if you want to talk about the impact that it can have on your CEB and people wanting to see your area, um, if the mayor came to see a game or to see a charity again, there was two plays that made national television that night. They were number six and number three respectfully on ESPN SportsCenter, top ten. Those two plays all happened to happen right there in left center field, right in front of a big billboard that said Business Savannah on it. That's covered, that helps grow your brand. Now, there's Holly Springs in mind, and thinking to the people that spoke earlier today, that yes, you all are challenged with thinking of your citizens as they are now. But since we got that approval in twenty twelve in Holly Springs to current, the population in Holly Springs has increased by ten thousand. Businesses, there's been at least a hundred new businesses come to the area. Okay, I'm also chair of the board of the Chamber of Commerce in Holly Springs, I, I speak from experience with those numbers. Not only do you have a task to think of your citizens right now, but you have a task to forecast where you want Brunswick to be and the citizens that will come. The businesses that will look at this asset, which is what you're talking about, is your, your asset that can draw new business to come because of the simple fact that it increases the way of life for their employees. These are things that Holly Springs has taken advantage of, and these are things that I feel strongly that can be done here in Brunswick as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, again, my name is Paul Kellman, I was in BQK Baseball, the Sunderhouses, uh, and I am the council reporter. I, I've taken a ton of time and research and efforts with the city attorney and the city in general to, uh, form this MOU, which is the culmination of, uh, BQK Baseball's part years of working, and on my part, the better part of twenty nineteen, putting together everything that we have studied, learned, and found out about how we can do this in a economically feasible way that benefits the city and benefits my clients. The MOU, as the commissioner's pointed out, is not mining. It requires that everybody works in good faith, and the reason that we're coming to you today is to start a conversation. It's as simple as that. Now, when I sat down with the Sunderhouses, I told them that I wouldn't be involved with this by taking a pie in the sky proj- project to young. I wouldn't come to the city with a problem without a solution, and we worked diligently to come up with those solutions, which are reflected in MOU. Now, the MOU is intentionally vague because we want to negotiate with the city and come up with a strategy that's mutually beneficial as we go through and we create this wonderful opportunity for everyone. I've gathered from public comment that, uh, the funding of this stadium is of concern. I agree, it is of concern. There's various concerns regarding property taxes, our bid over darkness, they came with a current position of no information. It was slightly disheartening to see months of hard work be characterized for reading on document, which is just a starting off, just the tip of the iceberg. But it's, it was, concerns are valid. But it's premature to address them. Not only is it premature to address those concerns, which are not being, there's actually being taken no money, big expense, right now, this is an agreement to agree. But it also mis, mischaracterized what we would like to do from a funding perspective. It would be a tall order to come to you and say, we want thirteen million dollars in general application bonds, which would be the bonds that increase property taxes. That would be, that would be a tall order. We do foresee some general application bonds for this project. We see, foresee private financing, you will see the MOU's reference commitments from both BQK and the city. Each and every statement, both MOUs, is BQK. Each and every statement, both MOUs, is BQK and the city negotiating, figure out what to work. More importantly, it's not simply just increasing property taxes, burdening residents to support non-residents, as it was put. We've come up with a myriad of financing options. We would like to present to the city, have to be engaged in negotiations, such as with the MOU. The majority of this funding comes through revenue bonds. And there are multiple revenue bond sources for the city's contribution. And without talking about the topic of contribution, we wanted to come to the city with a top figure of what we think the stadium costs. So, and I hope the commission can appreciate this. So from the outset, you know what you're getting into. We're going to be very upfront with you the entire time. You will always know what you're getting into. We're not going to try and get something done and not give you a dollar cost for it, not tell you what you're looking forward to. But the revenue bonds that can substantially offset this will be made more than likely through several sources. One of those being tax allocation bonds, which I believe the commissions can argue with the tax allocation that this was created in 2017 and is currently being funded and can be used to provide revenue bonds. In addition, the tenant of the stadium can, without committing, you know, because we need to negotiate, but is agreeable to a single payer or revenue bond. It comes from the revenue of the stadium to go back to pay to the debt service bill bonds. And the numbers that go along with that, we haven't done a rough math, like some public comment. We've done a detailed math. We've looked at what the numbers might look like. Of course, all of this is subject to bond financing and bonding companies re-agree and say that they will loan money under these circumstances. Other than that, I'll ask the commission if they have any questions about the MOU specifically. I do think that it's a very broad document and it's been generated in good faith to open this hour off before something that we hope the commission wants. But most importantly, we have your constituents on. Well, I don't have your constituents, I won't.
Well, thank you for, thank you for your sharing as well. And I'll say one more point is that yes, the MOU is vague, but it's also skewed towards your client because you work for your client. And our attorney here, he has been able to help us as we negotiate through this. And this is a good starting point, I would say. However, I'd say it is skewed toward your client because you work for your client. That's exactly what you did. But I'd say the first impression, what people have said, people have told us, you know, that's one reason why they didn't, nobody didn't have all the particulars about it. But negotiating is where we want to be to be able to see what we can do. Because there are things here that maybe we just don't want, maybe things that we can do without. And that's the negotiating part of it. Funding part as well, we, I speak on myself, I think we're looking for a public private partnership where we don't pay dollars in money, $13 million to pay, we kind of share it. And then other folks who may want to come in and help us as to, as we try to build the stadium, $13 million. And quite frankly too, it may be the fact that we decide we want to build corporate and build the stadium. I don't know that. But that's what this commission can decide and negotiate along with our attorney so we can figure out something like that. For the MOU to be here to, only for giving us the opportunity to talk in good faith and not consider you and then somebody else trying to undercut you or whatever. If that's what this is all about, then that is a good starting point.
Mr. Mayor, we promise not to talk to any cities if you want to talk to any baseball teams. Can we, you guys have comments? Do you have anything to add?
No, the only thing is that people have known about this thing for a long time and all of a sudden we're hit with all this information. And if indeed all we're doing is talking, I'll talk to anybody anytime about one of those choices. And I can prove in Brunswick, I don't need all this stuff, I really don't. And I think it's concerned a lot of people that this thing has known on this long and it's come up with a MOU that is clearly not in favor of certain properties in the city and certainly not to me, my actual people, for us to just have to even. We've got a lot to open here, but I don't see where this MOU helped any. I really, you know, I hear you, other people won't leave, you know, and won't take us. So, so be it if they do. I wish I had known about this long, I really did. I, you know, believe in college baseball. I believe in baseball, period. I believe in our kids, I believe in recreation for our kids, so to speak. And hopefully there will be a place here for what you're talking about. I don't see the need for this MOU, I really don't see it.
Commissioner, please, in combination, just briefly. The MOU is necessary. It protects both of us, it protects the city and importantly, it protects my client. And what I mean by that is that it allows us to move forward. I know that we're talking about spending right now, but we're also talking about franchise and tremendous financial obligation now, not only my client, but also the CEB. And to have the assurances that have been taken in this MOU, that is a threshold of matter that we can't, we can't have conversations until we have assurances.
I don't think it needs to be this MOU. I'm not saying that we couldn't have an MOU. I think this is ludicrous. And if I had known about it, when you started with this thing, I would have not called the area to open this one. Now, I know what it is and I don't think it's the right thing. I would not have had, we've got this stuff, it's been here five or six years. It could have been being worked on. Instead, we've worked through this and have not been in my direction. Or to my knowledge, to this commission's correction, that's our problem with it. I don't care what you said, I really don't. I would not have had to work with them to get to this point.
Okay.
I would agree to some, to some degree too, because I was hit with it about the same kind of issue or case and was. And it's a lot of information, it's a huge decision, it's a lot of money. And we provided more detailed information, which is great. But in three years, I have no idea how much franchise costs. I don't, I don't see any equity coming out of the franchise owner's pockets. There's, there's no, there's no explanation other than the 13, and I know it's a number you just kind of picked out, the 13 million. But, you know, when you have something running so quickly, you just kind of push back because you need more information. You need a level of comfort even before you sit down at the table and start to talk. And this is a huge financial project. And to have a little bit more information initially, to me, would be important.
Commissioner Martin, you're in turn, I should. I think that we didn't give the MOU a second of it. Each and every one of those commitments that you're shoulder on the city right now is filed and the MOU has been a commitment of both BQK and the city, and the whole of the city. Financing, all of this is negotiable. And so we have, I pointed out, we have to have assurances before we can move forward based on the line of commitments that are being made.
So let me just throw this. If y'all move forward with applying for the franchise, we start negotiating and working through some of the details, everything goes south, then what happens?
I guess we'll have a baseball team at that point.
Is the franchise looking for another location?
And essentially, that's what we've already applied. Basically, we've been vetted by Commissioner Sellers. So we've already put a financial commitment to Mr. Sellers. That's how strongly we feel about the mission. And if that is the case, well, we're still vetted through the commission. It's going to be a very hard pill to swallow to pick up my family in somewhere where I've got a house pending construction in the city of Brunswick. I've got six properties that I own in corporate office on G Street. So there's a lot of things that we have vested in this community, not only on the security of this community. Just because it's not public. Because I have a 16-year law enforcement career. That's because of, for my safety and the safety of my kids and my wife. So that's kind of why there are some things that aren't necessarily public. Commissioner Martin, to the extent that you're worried about city liability with that question, if the MOU was terminated down the road, as long as there's a good reason for that termination, then I don't believe the city will ever face liability. I'll let your city turn it back. Well, I don't think he would put us in that position that would face liability for the franchise. He would not do that. So, so answering your question, if everybody else is on the way back. Commissioner, Mayor Fulton, do you have anything?
I, I was just gonna think, because I know this is a process, it's going to be a process. I know there's some time sensitive things that has to be done and all that kind of stuff. But I would recommend that somehow this commission forms a committee, be it citizens, be it the finance committee, our city attorney and citizens. How, we see that to be a part of this so that we get citizen engagement and citizen engagement in this effort so that, you know, we have to like, nobody knew what was going on.
That is something that was anticipated, being our request of the commission included, that we create a subset of community and, you know, I don't know if this together, does any personality that would go through these things? And that's things that you're talking about. And certainly, once, you know, we have the transfers in the MOU then, visiting with each of the MDA, visiting with the concerned citizens, talent, if they're necessary, whatever the city would, we would be all present in this, on our own, for whatever the city would like to see more of, you know, as much. Again, if I was being, I'm trying to have my client. Commissioner Harris, about to say something?
Yeah, I just kind of sit there. To me, this is a car for us. I agree with Commissioner Casey's whole argument, not against the premise of what you're trying to do. But I'm wondering why I have an MOU before me that I just saw at the last meeting. This is not our procedures, our process, and how we vet and do other things. So I'm wondering how we get to this point if we're already at the MOU, asking to sign, asking us to sign an MOU. We've not gone through our procedures yet. We've already discussed this back in our prior meeting and nothing has taken place according to our prior procedures and how we vet and how we do things. And yet still, we have an MOU before us and we're asking to sign an MOU that we as a full commission have not had the opportunity to review financial information. And we are here being asked to sign an MOU. I am totally not in agreement with this at all. I cannot support it. Not that I cannot support what we are trying to do, and the purpose of what you're trying to do. I can't support it because I don't have information up to support it. And I don't know why we are even looking at an MOU tonight. I don't know why we're being asked to consider and sign an MOU that we have not gone through our number of procedures for the vetting. I'm gonna get you right there, but you've been here a long time and it's 9:00. And I can say I'm ready to go home. But I, we shouldn't be at this point. Now, I can't speak for whoever else has seen this, but I've not seen it until the next meeting we just had. I've seen you all and I appreciate you all wanting to do this and coming. But this is not our own procedures and we've not gone through this. And we're not the first persons that have told us, I told you before. And I've told others before, I've called anybody out, I've put anybody in this spot. But this is not the way we operate. When other potential investors and developers have come to us, we have taken them through hell and highways before they can even get to the point that we would even be considering an MOU. And then of this magnitude of a financial commitment and exclusivity, I just can't, I can't do it right now. I'm not saying I'm going to make it through in the future once I get all the pieces of the puzzle I need together. But right now, I can't support it. Not the MOU, not the signing of an MOU, not the venture, but the signing of an MOU.
Okay, I'll speak like this and I'll speak to you to your report, Commissioner Harris. You know, there's other, there's some, they ask for, going to be back, but they don't agree with it. They don't agree with it, really tired of our being into things. As Commissioner, Mayor Fulton, when you say about the MOU, give us something to say that we are willing to go with. We are, we're gonna be talking to them and we want somebody to come in and undercut them. We're trying to talk to them, just people that we're exclusively going to talk to them. See how far it goes out, if it pays out, then it doesn't work. But that's my estimation of what the MOU is all about. I, I'm, I just got to choose as well, as you say. But I've, I've known about individuals who want to do something outside. Everybody seems to think that only baseball will play there, that they, that there will be multiple sports played there. And it would be, as I think Commissioner Casey alluded to one time before, about our recreation department coming back, reverse back to the city once. And when it's reversed back, it will have those sports right there available, which will be soccer, baseball, football, and I think tennis as well. So it would just be a sports contest. However, as I said, the money, the billing, it has some issues until we, I know that I've negotiated, get those things straight. If we, we, right, if we just start, I guess, start to negotiate. Some individuals don't need MOU to negotiate, to start a conversation. And it seems like you guys do because of obligation to franchise or whatever, maybe that's what it is. Well, we are right at the cusp of being ready to, to talk and negotiate and find out whether we can do this thing or not. That's basically what it is. We have to make a good presentation and we will decide if this is where we want to go. The MOU kind of, I guess, took us all by surprise. But it is here, here before us. That's all I got right now. So, Mr. Attorney, oh no, wait, you got an answer, you want to say something else before I get back to Attorney?
Just appreciate your time. So, give me a couple questions of this and that stuff.
All right, we appreciate you all too.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you very much.
I appreciate, appreciate you all the time. I hope that you take a look at this and look forward to working with y'all in the future.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Attorney, we got this, we got these two MOU before here. And the question, my question to you is, if this MOU, we see as efficient with it, does that prevent us from continuing our negotiation, talking with BQK? with, does that prevent us from continuing our negotiation and talking with B Q K? How, how does this affect us, one way or the other?
We can always continue negotiations, I'm sure, we can always continue discussion, um, and introduce us to the entire new commission.
Well, it seems that, uh, some of the commissioners saying, we went too fast, too far, went too far, too fast, and now we're just gonna pull back a bit so we can actually get things in perspective, the way our process goes.
The information needs to be out in the public that we're completing, and that was the problem, the whole thing, and not that.
Well, Johnny, it needs to be proposed before you can get to the, um, community, we, we need to know about it, how to come.
No, we, we were reading on, I hope you, we were reading, but the community has to know about what we're, we're supposed to listen to, and then that, that is important.
Such as, taking a town hall meeting, is that your thought, or would, would be the first?
This is, this is not my thought, it's so, so, so far down here, so we need to be acting just a little, and us, and we're out of ways, we get the community involved, and today, we can, we can get together.
Well, I think so too, I, I think.
We, we got ways to sell in public, to change, we've got, we've got science, we've got following, yellow notice, this will look, yeah, there will change, I mean, we got ways to do it, but it doesn't matter, I mean, I want to, but that, it has to be, uh...
I'd have to, I'd have to guide us with the commission, if they are, you know, you have issues with the process, procedures that are in place, we will...
Well, there, there are two options, as it brings, that are two suggestions we can present to you, one of them, Mayor Fortin, uh, I want to pre excuse you, and then Commissioner Casey, about putting the public, uh, Commissioner Martin, just say, maybe the time all week or something.
The presentation?
Yes, and then maybe the public can get on board too as well, uh, that is all, I guess, those types, I, I like the co-site committee, maybe, I like that.
That's what I'm saying, President, present.
The co-site committee though is, I don't, I don't...
One side is co-site, you...
Okay, right, I think we need to be as inclusive as possible initially, and then perhaps break into, uh, commit a smaller, but I, I think if we circumnavigate getting, getting this out in the public to the degree that we, we should, talking a lot of capital planning, um, and information, information is needed, I mean, this is, to me, you're gonna have more pushback from the, from the public and our citizens just kind of like you did tonight, because we don't have that information, and if, if this is something that truly would be transforming Brunswick, what better way to present it than with all the information right, right now versus now, um, with a presentation, question, answers?
And, and, and my thing is, who, who vetted them financially? I understand that they went through the commission of the C P L, but who for the city vetted them financially? That's our process, it's not been done. Who, who, who did? Who vetted their financial for the city? Who?
I'm saying that if, if, when the MOU should be signed, that would be the first step.
So, is that what we do, is that how we usually do business?
No, no, the MOU, no, 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 maybe, no.
I, I understand it, um, my question is, is that how we usually do business?
I mean, I would say that if people don't, I need to vet it until they even respond to an R F E, or we provide a, a, so what?
So, when we do an R F E, are we signing something saying we're gonna be exclusive?
No, I mean, no.
Okay.
I think that's what Commissioner Harris was concerned, the exclusivity of focus, so, I know that at one point there were actually another lead that saw possibly coming in, and I think since, since, since that time, because of the posters, or Jackson, or two of them, they found they were unable to, and I understand, uh, I can't remember, say your last name again?
Sundar House or...
I understand their concern with possibly someone else coming in, negotiating with someone else, uh...
That, that's...
I mean, but I'm, I'm like this, I'm like this, if, if, you know, a lot of things that the city wants to have done in the past, we've done, we've committed, if we said to a investor that we're not negotiating with anyone, would you expect to that? Until such time as we decided not to, whatever the case was, so, um, you know, I, I understand the concerns from the public and the general public, the MOUs, and, and, you know, certain things, if they read the MOU, because if you read it, and not really understand everything that's going on, it, it sounds like, okay, the city department to build us a thirteen million dollar stadium, that's what it sounded like, if you read it, if I read it, that's what it sounded like.
I'm staying with what I said.
But I, and I understand, I understand what, what's being said, but what I got on paper, what goes to, if, if, if there's, if there's ever any legal, what I got on paper is what the honest gonna say, well, this is what you agreed to.
With all due respect, I, I would never allow that, and if there's parishy courts in there, or private city coverage, if something like that would take place, I think the idea behind these would be a commitment first, and then others, into a transparent area to negotiate in good faith, but I think of getting a clearer and true direction and what the commission does, that's what I would do.
Okay, it seems that, uh, although I know, uh, with Sundar House, and Miss Sundar House, they are on a time schedule, and they're trying to get this thing done, but are they certain, which is like two years from now in a sense, uh, be open?
Twenty twenty-two is contemplated in the MOU.
Yes, okay, so they're trying to get it open, and, and be ready to go, uh, with that also state, but if we don't get a stadium, we don't, that won't be done anyway, uh, so.
We don't think we have stadium, Sheriff, we don't have stadium.
No, we don't have, or what's that?
We've got, we've got, we've got stadium.
Does this affect the loss agreement with the county, and how it's...
Um, that would be something that's going to affect part of this negotiation, as twenty twenty-two rolled around, currently, there is not much use of the area, which, well, I guess it just depends on the location, what is selected, it may not have any implication of the loss agreement.
What about...
Loss agreement, uh, what's that, we work back to the, to the city, on the loss agreement, how it's working, we work back to the city, period?
But this is not location specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I was just saying.
Those are different locations selected, it would have any implications, but...
It's, it's, it's some other stuff in that MOU that needs to be looked at, um, I just, I, I've read it, I've gone through it, but I haven't even gotten to the other parts, because I can't get past the first part that we did not do, so, I'm, I'm standing on what I'm standing on, is there's some other stuff that I saw in there, um, but I'm sure we could work it out, it would happen, um, but there's some other things out there, um, is how is this going to affect the, the public use of the entirety of this part, because I read some stuff in that MOU that says the city has to come and talk to, um, I don't know, this C, C P L, or this B, B Q K, and all that stuff that, that put a crown on my face, because in essence, we have to come in at permission for certain uses, usage at certain times, and we have to check their schedule, make sure, all this stuff.
I mean, I mentioned to address the ability of the public's access, the reminder, if there is a...
But we said in the statement it's supposed to be for public uses, what, not just exclusively, so I, I, but I need to get to that part, because I can't get past my first part first.
If I could make a reference, man, if we could refer this item to a date certain, January, January twenty twenty, hopefully by then, um...
Not, not first meeting, no.
Well, it's...
Can we enjoy my...
Maybe, 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 gonna say, maybe by then, the owners will have engaged the public, so they, they, they have a right to engage, but it's not our responsibility to engage the public, let them, and once, you know, we come back on the fifteenth of January in our first meeting, we can make a decision. Uh, that sounds fair, Mayor Fortin, also, uh, let's see about getting, uh, committee together, getting a committee with, uh, uh, couple commissioners, uh, some public, public input, uh, with that, also, uh, financial, we can get a committee together, uh, that we try to vet this out, uh, before we move forward in the negotiation. It seems that this, this MOU is a sticking point right now, so, uh, to get past that, why don't we, uh, um, allow, uh, B Q K to, to have access to it also, people's public, although it's not the public, not yet, but to, uh, if we want to weekend, um, have an open...
Open House?
No, no, no.
Town Hall presentation?
Yeah, put in, so we can get word out, yeah, I might, I might, right, it's talking hard, really, it's a good, good time to do it, uh, and, uh, maybe we can have done it before end of the year, we got a good chance.
I think it is, I'm not sure that they're all...
I think after the first year, it's not after.
Oh, you can all, you can talk?
The end just not needed to ask.
Yeah, they're all, they're very...
I think, you know, we're, we're trying to put responsibility on us. Well, I tell you, I tell you what, it seems that we all have different ways of doing this, why don't, why don't we, uh, uh, email our recommendation to, to Naomi, we're gonna meet again in January fifteenth, and we'll have all the recommendations, what you need to do, we can make a decision right then and there, uh, and, uh, the MOU, evidently, not gonna sign, that's what I said.
Okay, because now I'm confused, so, we're not gonna do anything, we're not gonna call the public in or do anything?
They will, they will, we're gonna get the information, and that's still what we want to do, right now, what we want to do, to, uh, for, uh, fifteen, we'll email them, that's still what we're, we're...
Can we just sit and sort of take it?
Right, right, not, I think it's...
Then, then we're, we're waiting for seven or eight, so we're in, so, so, because some of us probably engaged after the first of the year, it was four, January thirteenth. It gives us some indication of where the public sits with all this, I'm, I'm, we all engaged with the public for the fifteenth, I'm not ready to vote again, and I'm not ready, you know, to consider anything without at least a little bit more...
That's out, that's out of town, I mean, for, for, between the first and fifteenth, yeah.
We need to advertise, we need the information out of all the M V As, the chair, the, uh, and term of review, maybe.
We put the responsibility on the city, not our responsibility.
They will make it on the day, so, this is...
Okay, Sundar House?
Uh, in terms of the public comment, it's not, we are more than willing to engage them, on our half, as long as we have, you know, some type of representation or communication of what that is, to go out to the citizens, I would like some, going back and forth, I'm already willing to do that, I have no problem referring the MOU, like, I have no attempt of saying going forward, even if it's past January fifteenth, but I don't want to be negative in a sense, I want positivity behind it, city needs positivity, and I would, I want to work with the city, it's not, I don't want to not part, that's why we're bringing this to you, yes, the MOU presented is to protect business interests, that's what we are, I would love for the word, you know, of doing business, it's just, that is to protect interest of, again, it's not just B Q K, B Q K baseball on this, there's also the coastal playing game, so there's the reasons why the MOU should present it.
Okay, well, we got MOU on our way, we suppose we go to, uh, Commissioner Harris, we're gonna vet, like, we should vet, goes to our, our process, and, and hopefully, without any problems.
Thank you for letting us keep on.
Okay, so we will get time on we, uh, somewhere between first and fifteenth, Naomi will get to get that set up, um... It's now, uh, for the MOU, Q, Q, what is it?
Q K.
B Q K, so we'll see until our, to our, to, to, point of view. Most acceptable for the firm, you're voting MOU until, uh, our first meeting in January J, uh, fifteenth, any further discussion?
No, only, only that, obviously, the Sundar House need to, we need, we need somebody of your schedule as well, town hall.
Be more than one, to the time I have.
Any further questions, comments? The whole, the question is where I am, all right, it took us a while to get there, but we got there, I want to thank everybody for getting where we are. So, uh, we're at the end of our regular, can you credit agenda, uh, do you need for today?
Yes, real estate, and litigation.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
Real estate, personal, and litigation.
It's valid, most we would have next session, real estate, personal, and litigation. Both second, uh, going to next session, and, and, real estate. On the way to say aye?
Aye.
We'll just stay right, we will go to your next session, after we come back, during our meeting, stand up during the next session.